Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, October 26th at 7:30 PM in the boardroom. Thank you all, for those that are in person, for those that are outside on a nice fall evening waiting to come in. Thank you, and thank you for all of those on Zoom land, as always. Appreciate it. I want to make sure everyone understands that all the conversations and discussions that have gone on over the last several weeks, that as a community, the leaders, Dr. Adley, myself, First Selectman Stevenson, other members of boards and committees, have all been in discussions and talked with each other about what's going on and how we move forward as a community. So it's not specific to the district or the schools, but we're looking at it from a community standpoint, and we'll continue to do that. And all the input, comments, emails, everything is important. So we'll continue to listen and continue to work through it. I really was not sure how to start this evening, but I think my philosophy of keeping it simple works. Schools exist for children. It's the best way to get back to the focus of the Board of Education work, the role of the administration, and the daily responsibilities of teachers and staff. The mission of the Darien Public Schools is to work cooperatively with families and the community to provide for its students a safe, supportive, respectful, and intellectually challenging learning environment that promotes personal excellence through active collaborative and creative thinking that stimulates individual development of the skills and integrity necessary to become productive members of society. I think it's important we always chew up back to that. For all of you in attendance tonight, and specifically our students, we want you to know that we hear you, want to act with you, and support you in every possible way. Your suggestions and words have meaning, and will help create a safer environment in all our schools. We want your voices, thoughts, concerns, goals, and anything else you want, we want to hear it. Please do not hesitate to use your voices tonight and regularly make your school communities a safer, more inclusive, and creative space for all. For the teachers in attendance tonight and listening in, we hear you, and thank you for your professional, passionate letter. It is important to listen and hear all viewpoints. Your opening sentence in paragraph two sums it up. Teachers enter this profession for one simple reason: children. I believe that works with our district philosophy of schools exist for children. We want you to be able to deliver creative, engaging, and collaborative environments in your classrooms so that you can bring the best to all students. Your words are incredibly valuable to our school community, and we want you to know that you are heard and play a key role in the process of creating a safer, more inclusive, and creative environment in our schools. I feel as important as we talk about our community and coming together, I reference an almost immediate response on a Facebook page to the teacher's letter. The headline is "Teacher Group Bullies Parents." Is this really how we want to move forward? By not valuing or listening to another point of view? So bullying replaces dialogue and agreeing to disagree, discuss, and do what's best for all to move forward as a community? Bullying by Merriam-Webster, someone we all know. A blustering, brow-beating person, one who is habitually cruel, insulting, or threatening to others. So in the interest of our students and being role models, do we really want to use the word bully, bullies, or bullying? And reference our teachers, who are the backbone of one of the highest-rated school districts in the state and nationally. It stops now. Is this really the new normal? I warn us all as a community. This has spread beyond our small-town borders, and if you think this will not impact hiring, people thinking about retirement, and people that want to come and have their career here, you are wrong. And without our teachers, staff, and administrators, we become a community with beautiful homes and nice beaches on Long Island Sound. For our parents in attendance tonight, your relationships with your children and life experiences you bring to the table are incredibly important to our school community. Thank you for the support and always investing in our district to be a leader in education. We hear you, see you, and respect your input. We want you to feel you have a collaborative relationship with your children, their teachers, our board, and the administration. We do this together. We need all parents to be present after school, at the dinner table, or might I say, 10:20, on the weekends, on the sports fields, and in the auditorium for music and theater productions. The role model responsibility moves between the classroom and the home every day. All three groups, students, teachers, and parents, are important to us to get our education system and community to a place where everyone feels safe and included. The environment must be diverse, inclusive, collaborative, creative, and effective in getting our students to be the best versions of themselves. For our students to use their own minds to be creative and effective with their work. For our students to not hesitate to be leaders in their community and treat others the way they want to be treated. The administration, board, staff, and community leaders are working on all this. We're working through our strategic plan, which includes diversity, equity, and inclusion. We're looking at resources within and professional organizations outside the district that can help us move forward as a community. This is a work in progress and a joint effort with the community, and we hope each and every one of you uses your voices to help us get to where we need to be. At this point, the constant question of how did we get here is over. We don't need to talk about it anymore. It's how we move forward. Everyone's voices need to be heard. Everyone's ideas need to be expressed. All perspectives need to be seen. Goals need to be achieved. We agree to disagree and continue the conversation, and as a community, we do this together. Thank you. We will now move to public comment.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face and/or name or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll organize this a little because we have people inside, we have people outside, we have students. It's a school night. It's so good that they're here, and we have people on Zoom. But I just want to clarify and go over a little bit about public comment. I understand a number of people wish to express and address the board this evening. The board welcomes your comments and values the different perspectives that members of the public share in public comment. On behalf of the board, I wish to remind those offering comments to follow our guidelines for public comment. Speakers may speak for up to three minutes. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone. We do not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarities. As it is our custom, the board views public comment as an opportunity for members of the public to share your concerns with the board and board members. Board member discussion on any topic must be on the agenda for the meeting, and information we receive from the public during public comment may be the basis for future agenda items. I've said this repeatedly over the last several board meetings. In these days of social media, it is important to remember that we are responsible for statements we make. Inferences drawn or comments made on social media are at times incorrect, and speakers must be careful not to repeat false accusations. False accusations can be unfair, harmful, and even defamatory. We strive to be accurate in our description of the facts, and we ask that members of the public take care to assure that any factual assertions they make are fair and accurate as well. I appreciate you all listening, and again, respect all the public comments, and we welcome all. So we'll start with our students. First student, if you'd like to come in, you can all stand in the back there, that's fine. And Michelle, do you... So how this works is you state your name and you state your address, and then you have three minutes to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Maggie Ramsey and 229 Long Neck Point Road. Thank you for your time tonight and for all that you do for our schools. My name is Maggie Ramsey, and I'm a senior at Darien High School. I'm a member of the National Honor Society, co-president of the Youth Asset Team, captain of the varsity soccer and basketball teams, varsity starter on the Wade Girls Across team. I'm committed to play at USC next year. I'm not telling you these things to boast. I'm telling you these things because I feel I'm about as involved as it gets in this DHS community, and we need to see improvements. But I'm here to talk to you today because I'm also a member of the LGBTQ+ community, and I can no longer just ignore what is happening in our school community. I am bisexual and have been out for about a year now, and in many ways, it has been the worst year of my life. I want to share just a few of my experiences in this town that I've stayed quiet about up until now. In these stories I'm going to tell, I'll be using the slurs that I was called, and I want to be very clear that it is never acceptable to use these words in any other context or by people outside of the queer community. The first time I was slurred, I was outside a friend's house, and a group of DHS boys I had never met came up and started shouting, "Maggie Ramsey is a dyke." And the words "faggot" and "lesbian" were also shouted. They then hurled a can at my head and splashed their drink in my face. I did nothing. The next time I was walking through the cafeteria when I heard someone behind me say "faggot" and point at me. This is when I first started to feel unsafe in school. But again, I did nothing. When one of my close friend's parents found out I was bisexual, they told their daughter that they were no longer allowed to hang out with me because I would, quote, "ruin her reputation." I had experienced hate from kids, but getting it from an adult was so much more concerning to see and shows that hate is taught. I again did nothing. The last example I will share, although there are many, many more, was particularly hurtful. I was at a social event with some friends from the Across team when a DHS boy shouted at me, "What is a lesbian doing here?" I again did nothing. I expected some of my friends to maybe say something or stand up to him, but they only did when I asked them to. This proves that, of course, not everyone at DHS is hateful, but there's a culture where the people who are not hateful are too scared to stand up for what is right. I am also very close with several girls of color at DHS, and their experiences are similar or worse. Just in the last few weeks, friends of mine have been told, quote, "Don't talk back to your master, and why don't you go back where you came from?" And they have endured much, much worse during their years at DHS. Given all my friends and I've experienced, the racist, misogynistic, and anti-LGBTQ+ graffiti was horrifying, but not surprising in the slightest. It is a part of a pattern that has been allowed to develop. Just last week, Tesla was ordered to pay judgment of over $137 million for allowing a hostile work environment to develop in one of their factories. This is exactly what we are allowing to form in our schools. These are not individual incidents, but evidence that we are allowing to form this culture in our school. Previously, I did not go to anyone to report any of these issues because I thought it was hopeless and nothing would really change. But now I'm asking you to please hear us out and give us hope back. I am so tired. We are so tired. School is a place where you're supposed to be able to escape hatred and not have to worry about being hate-crowned when you're just trying to learn. Darien needs to do better about dealing with events like this, not just say the words we condemn hate, but actually have a zero-tolerance policy for any form of hate. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for your public comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Giselle Weineger. I live on 16 Maple Street, and I am also a senior at Darien High School. I am here to discuss the changes that many members of the student body hope to be implemented in our school and community. While there has been acknowledgements of issues of discrimination within Darien schools, more action is needed from parents, administration, and the board. Whether it was not addressing the issue at all or simply sugarcoating what happened and quickly moving on, there have been little serious actions taken in the public eye to help us progress as a community. One of the biggest steps that we can take is to have more open and honest conversations, both at school and in the home. It is my understanding that many parents do not believe it is the school's job to educate their children on these kinds of issues. And while it is the parent's right and responsibility to raise their children, the community has proven that we cannot rely on them to solve these issues. If they happen within the school, they must be dealt with within the school. Leaving it up to the parents is clearly not enough. We must be more conscious about word choice. The recent video released by administration addressing the vandalism in the boys' bathroom had a light tone that many students felt did not address the severity of the situation. In our discussions as a school and community, we need to be more blunt about what is and what isn't. We need to use the words, as loaded as they are, racism, sexism, homophobia, antisemitism, bigotry, and more. Call it what it is. What was written on the bathroom stall was a felony and hate crime. The incidences against marginalized groups at DHS should be actively referred to as discrimination. To not do so allows the hateful members of our community to get away with what they do. Even if they are technically caught, they appear to have no real perception of the consequences of their action on those they discriminate against. Unfortunately, many teachers hesitate to speak out because they fear a lack of support. Defining what is too political or inappropriate to discuss in a classroom is certainly subjective, and my peer will go into more detail about how we believe the education of teachers on these issues could be enhanced. But there should never be an instance where a teacher gets in trouble for calling out an ignorant student for discrimination. To the teachers that have stood up for what is right, the student body applauds, appreciates, and loves you. You may never know the impact some of you have had on us to help girls, the LGBTQ+ community, and people of color feel safer. But to the teachers who have stood by, whether from lacking education or incentive to get involved, we are begging for change, and we need you. It comes down to this. Human rights are not political. The safety of your children is not political. The well-being of our community is not political. If we want this community to be uplifted and united, we must take the actions towards change and progress ourselves. The collaboration between students, faculty, and the administration is essential to win this battle against hatred. It starts with me, and it starts with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your public comments.
Hi, everyone. My name is Libby Punishill, and I live at 23 Fitch Avenue. Like my two peers who just spoke, I'm a senior at Darien High School, and like Maggie, I am also a part of the LGBTQIA+ community. Like both of my peers here, I am also disappointed and disgusted by the pattern of discriminatory behavior I have witnessed in my time in Darien. I have seen students time and time again exhibit actions of blatant racism, sexism, homophobia, and antisemitism. The Board of Education and the administration should both be doing more to protect students like me from these horrible experiences. One of the most important steps that needs to be taken in our community is that hateful actions need to be met with real punishments. Both in the past and currently, discriminatory words and actions have been met with minimal punishments, such as a one or two in-day school suspension or a removal from a singular football game. I've seen students be punished more severely for acts of plagiarism and vaping on campus. There is no situation where our administration should consider hate speech a lesser offense than plagiarism, but unfortunately, they have. Our administration needs to begin giving students real consequences that will show them that their hate will not be tolerated. The second action that needs to be taken is the implementation of adequate training for our staff members. As my peer stated, some teachers feel that they would not be supported were they to lead conversations surrounding identity issues and discrimination. We spend the majority of our day in classes with these teachers, and they need to be trained on how to appropriately lead educational discussions in their classrooms, and also how to respond to acts of discrimination they witness in their classroom and in the halls. Our administration also needs to be trained because they are the ones responsible for responding to situations involving hateful actions and making it clear to students and teachers that they will be supported should they choose to report them. Administration needs to bring in an outside source to educate them on how to handle these issues because they do not have the perspective that is necessary to create this safe environment. Lastly, and most importantly, our athletic directors and coaches need to be trained on these same issues. As an athlete myself, I've seen how toxic and discriminatory the sports team environments at our school can be, and incidents tend to go unreported because they happen outside of the classroom. Our coaches need to receive training so that when issues of discrimination arise on their teams, they can recognize it, know how to properly address it in that moment, and understand that it is their responsibility to report these actions for the safety of their players. Students who actively engage in hateful speech or actions against the members of marginalized communities should be removed from their sports teams for a season to show that they will not be allowed to partake in athletics if they are contributing to a hateful environment. The school should never prioritize a strong athletic program over a student's feeling of safety and validity on their teams. Our school needs to do better. We've consistently claimed that these actions do not respect our community values, but I've seen nothing to prove that's true. As far as I'm concerned, these are exactly the values that Darien supports. Darien needs to be an environment where all students feel safe and valid in their identities, and also feel like they have a support system that will appropriately respond if they become a victim of the hate that has been ingrained in this town for so many years. Right now, our students feel alone. Please take action to show them that this is not the case. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your public comment.
Hi, I'm Emma DeGraff. I live on 108 Mansfield Avenue. I'm also a senior at this school. As you can see, I'm a little bit emotional. But I love public speaking and fighting for what I have to believe in. I'm disappointed that I feel the need to do so tonight and that others feel the need to do so tonight, too. This isn't standing up for what I believe in. These are human rights. This is feeling safe at school, what I'm trying to learn. I wish that one of the best schools in the country. We hear that all the time. I wish that... I'm sorry. I wish that at one of the best schools in the country, students wouldn't feel threatened and harassed when they're just trying to learn. I wish that the only thing that students would have to worry about at school is a test that they forgot about and not something about... Something that they're born with about their identity, something that they can't change. I hope that you can hear the young voices speak tonight and that you can show us that you care and you can show us the change that we're looking for. All of us are tired. I'm feeling unheard, and I know that that's not your intention. I know you want to show us that you care, so please do. I don't want to keep this conversation at bay and call it something political because what I feel right now up here and what I felt listening to my friends over there, that's not political. That's fear and anger and sadness. Thank you for listening. I hope that makes a difference.
Thank you very much for speaking. Thank to all of you for coming in on a school night and speaking. Appreciate it. All right, Michelle, we will move to those folks that are joining us in the room, and then we'll move to bringing people in from outside.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone in the seats have public comments?
Yes, please. Anyone that wants to come up for public comment in the room, please step up to the podium. Name and address. I know it's difficult with the masks, but just in order for Mrs. McCammon to capture the name and the address, please speak as loudly as you can. Thank you.
I've already lectured in a room this size for 80 minutes today with no microphone.
Beautiful.
So I think I'm okay. I'm Dr. Abigail Hornstein. I live at 17 Edmund Street. I think my time starts now. So I'm Dr. Abigail Hornstein, and I'm speaking tonight for my professional identity as the Woodhouse Cisco Professor of Economics at Wesleyan University. Wesleyan is nicknamed Diversity University because we have an extraordinarily diverse student body. It is well-known that diversity strengthens educational outcomes for all students. Economics is now the largest department, and each semester, we teach more students than Darien High School. Economics has profound problems with diversity, and yet we know that a variety of changes to the academic environment can profoundly alter the level and composition of enrollments and result in class atmosphere. In my own classrooms, I've seen that these changes have increased enrollments from underrepresented groups, decreased the rate of withdrawals and low grades for all students, while increasing the breadth and depth of learning for all of my students. If this is the case for my students, why do we have less going on here? It is only because of your collective inaction as a board, and that needs to change. I'd like to talk about how Darien can off-ramp from the toxic racism, misogyny, bigotry, homophobia, and antisemitism that flourishes in the schools in this district. First, focusing on those incidents as they fit a longstanding pattern of incidents in this town. The poor resolution has sent an unmistakable message to residents, and especially the targeted students, that they are on their own. That is wrong. There needs to be greater consequences for students who violate the social and educational mandates to do no harm to others. In that light, we need to stop expressing sympathy or concern for the perpetrators. We need constructive actions to change things now. Second, an extensive body of literature spanning multiple disciplines from sociology and government all the way to management and education has shown consistently that students of all backgrounds benefit from more inclusive educational approaches and that these need to be nimble and flexible, meaning they cannot be fixed in stone in the curriculum. Accordingly, instructor autonomy in the classroom, which I note is the ultimate in local control, is pivotal to the successful implementation of curricular modifications on an as-needed basis. Please prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion while giving teachers greater curricular independence. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and good night.
Thank you, Dr. Hornstein.
Susie Flaherty, Six Lake Drive. Folks, a serious threat to the quality of our education in Darien is risen. A small but loud group of people with an antiquated agenda have decided that they are qualified to dictate what should be taught to our children. Not the administrators we vetted and hired, not teachers with degrees in education and years in the classroom, but parents with their own personal priorities. An imaginary crisis has been manufactured by this small but loud group in order to weaponize the classroom for their own self-interests. We don't have to imagine what muzzling our teachers is doing to them as professionals. We can read about it in the Darien Times op-ed. But let's imagine what's going to happen to our kids. Students will sit in a classroom trusting that they are learning all there is to know, but instead, they will be taught on a need-to-know basis, partly determined by what a small group of parents want for their children. The rest of it will be taught by the good people at YouTube with no one to guide the kids through misinformation and bias because that lesson was thrown on the flyer by the curriculum police. But let's talk about what's next if we don't stop this insanity. Teachers will leave us for a community that actually respects them. The best educators will know that Darien, teachers who wish to prepare their students for the real world, need not apply, and they will not apply. Our kids will be taught by whomever is left over. Parents got the email today. NIESC, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, is coming to DHS. NIESC works with schools to establish and maintain high standards for all levels of education and will be the ones that recommend Darien as a high-quality school system. But will they this time around? I'm worried, and you should be, too. One of the many things NIESC will look for in Darien classrooms is inquiry, problem-solving, and higher-order thinking skills that require learners to engage in some of the following: activities that prioritize deep understanding, analysis, creativity, making connections, and understanding relationships; critical and creative thinking; dispositions such as independence, flexibility, and persistence. This is already being done and done well by our teachers. There is no crisis. The people who are qualified to keep Darien at the leading edge of education are the teachers who have degrees in education, are certified by the state, and actually in the classroom. My experience as a parent has shown me that the avenues for my input are already in place, and they work. If you want to see your child's curriculum materials, make that phone call. Ask the teachers to see them. Decide what you're uncomfortable with, your child learning, and omit that part of that learning from your child. But don't you dare try and censor what my child is going to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie Flaherty, for your comments.
Teresa, about 22 Circle Road. I just want to make clear that I am on the RTM Education Committee, Teresa, about twenty-two Circle Road. I just want to make clear that I am on the RTM Education Committee, but I am not speaking for the RTM Education Committee. Mr. Dineen, I'd like to thank you for your opening remarks. They were fantastic, and I also want to say how powerful those girls were. As we said tonight, and we seem to say every time, schools exist for children. We say at the door, "Action, show it." The last few years and the last month have been difficult ones for those members of our community who have often felt marginalized. Swastikas on buildings and desks, homophobic and misogynistic refuting. I saw the snapshot of what was written on that bathroom wall. I printed it out here. Imagine going to school every day knowing that there is a group of your peers who would like to kill you because you're gay. We, as a community, say all the right things. This is not who we are. We can den these actions. We, as a district, seek to educate our children on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Last week, the students at DHS were shown videos about how they should stand up for each other and speak out about their experiences. One group at DHS took to Instagram to speak about how they feel about what has been going on in the last week. I just lost my spot, and how it made them feel. Rather than try to empathize or understand their feelings, they were instead attacked by adults in a closed Facebook group. And I quote from one comment there: "Absolutely sickening. Professional politicians poisoning the Black Student Union at DHS as well." Another comment in that same closed group on another post stated, "He seems to only care about gays and Jews." These comments are dismissive of what our kids are feeling and experiencing. Is it any wonder they rarely come forward when they see something? They not only have to worry about being gaslit by their peers, but they have to worry about being attacked by the adults. We can teach our kids to be kind. We caution them to watch what they do online and how they should treat others. We ask them to be good digital citizens. But then we have a member of the Board of Education take to social media and tweet at another volunteer in town, na, 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 na. Or comment on a Facebook post live seen from the DTC headquarters with a picture of a dumpster fire. Those are the kinds of comments and posts that would likely send one of our kids to the principal's office. So I go back to the Instagram page that had been attacked, that high school group, and it says, "We tell students to watch what they say, but look at the adults they have to look up to." So while we're in the business of guiding and teaching our children, maybe we should take a moment to listen and learn from them instead. These are the snapshots.
Thank you, Teresa.
Hi, I'm Justine Stewart. I live at thirteen Samus Street. Thank you for having me. My pronouns are she, her, hers. The last time I spoke here, I was asking for stadium lights for my kids to play under, and that was an easier conversation. I've raised five children that graduated from Darien High School: Rock Baylor, Carson, Riley, Ren, and Maisy, all graduating between 2016 and 2021. Our family also hosted an ABC daughter. Over the past few weeks, hate has overwhelmed us in this community, specifically race, religion, gender, and one sexuality have been targeted in our children's safe spaces, their school communities. I cannot imagine what it feels like to be part of a minority population in this town. We are currently not protecting our minority students, nor are we preparing all students for the real world. Darien is a historical sundown town and is now a Caucasian bubble that our children grow up in. In the real world outside of this bubble, we call Darien, sixty percent of people identify themselves as white non-Hispanic. Here in Darien, it's ninety-one percent. In Gen Z, one in six people identify as LGBTQ+. That means approximately two hundred and forty of our DHS students are statistically LGBTQ. That means over half of our students were targeted on the bathroom wall because they are either female or LGBTQ in the past couple of weeks. Can you imagine being one of the nine percent of students that do not identify as white here, one of the two hundred and forty LGBTQ+ students, a female in the school? How would the events of the past few weeks look to you? Would you feel safe here? Evidently not, listening to our students. If you were one of the parents, how would you feel about your community? Would you be scared? Would you be angry? Would you consider moving? Do we begin to fear our neighbors here, or is our neighbor really our ally and just too afraid to speak up? If you were an outsider, would you even consider moving here? These are the questions we need to ask ourselves. Children are to be forgiven and are often just repeating the messages they hear at home. And I sincerely hope that the children at school that were part of any incidents learn, because as we know better, we do better. As adults, we know better, and when we don't, we should educate ourselves and apologize more in the wrong. Mr. Brown, I genuinely hope your gestures last week were unintentional and that you fold your arms in an unfortunate way, because there has been zero clarification, other than you're angry that people caught this gesture. It crosses one mind that you may have actually meant to send a dog whistle to any racists in Darien. After the incident, children in our community were gaslighted by adults as they expressed their concerns over the unexplained gesture. You have to understand that you hold power over these children as a Board of Ed member. It is of their concern because you are in charge of the decisions of their lives. This is not about how it was captured. It is about making it right. I have made mistakes in my life. I do it all the time. I apologize, and I'm super quick to apologize if it was unintentional. We are continuously learning as humans, and I hope you now understand your power and the power of hopefully an unintended gesture. Mr. Brown, it's time that you need to make a statement to this community and to the children that are living in fear here as to what the intent in that was. I want our children, as does everybody here, to feel safe, respected, and cherished. Please do the right thing and make a statement so it's clear as to what your intentions were and how our town can become healing and combating the fear and hatred that seems to be growing by the day. Thank you.
Justine Stewart, thank you for your comments. We need to remind everyone to please try and stay within the three minutes. We've got a lot of people that we want to hear. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melin Gasserud, and I live at thirty-five Grifway Lane. I have two sons who graduated from Darien High School and one daughter who is currently a junior. Nelson Mandela famously said, "No one is born hating another person because of the color of his skin or his background or his religion. People must learn to hate." So I ask you, members of the Board of Education, leaders of the schools here in Darien, what are our children learning from you? In the past month, a high school student was reportedly bullied after identifying with a conservative ideology. The board responded with an hour-long conversation during a meeting about curriculum development and how closely classroom materials are vetted. There were many questions for the superintendent and strong points of view given by various board members. The next week, homosexuals were threatened with a message written at the high school, and the resulting conversation at the board lasted maybe five minutes. Several members seemed more interested in looking at their phones than participating in the discussion. It was also revealed that an antisemitic message had been posted to a DHS football social media account, and I don't think any questions were asked about that. Nobody wanted to hear from the athletic department about the climate on the DHS teams. Last week, a sitting member of the Board of Education displayed a widely-recognized symbol of hate during a televised event, and there has been complete silence. Whether or not the symbol was intentionally displayed or was it an accident, don't some of you want to hear an apology or an explanation? I believe that we have reached a crossroads, and it's time to rise above partisan disagreements and a misguided attempt to gain power or build coalitions on the board. The hate that is raging through this town is not partisan. It's simply hate. This is a human issue, not a political issue. We have students who have been threatened and feel unsafe, and others who simply feel that they cannot be the person they want to be. We have teachers who feel attacked and others who feel unwelcome in our classrooms in Darien. We have community members who cannot look their neighbors in the eye after reading their posts on secret or even public websites about the ridiculousness of the diversity conversation or criticizing others for, quote, "caring only for gays and Jews." This is a human issue. Nelson Mandela also said, "If people can learn to hate, they can be taught to love, for love comes more naturally to the human heart than its opposite." It's time to put all of the children, and really, people of Darien first, not just like-minded people or those who have similar values. It's time to address bullying and find a way to keep hate groups out of our schools. It's time to advocate for those who feel offended and unsafe at school. It's time to support the teachers who are doing their best to develop good global citizens. It will take every one of you to figure a way out of this. I believe that all of you can do better.
Thank you, Melin.
Good evening. My name is Antoinette Coles, and I live at five Hillside Courts. I am co-chair of the DHSPA. I've lived in town for sixteen years, and my husband and I have three children who all have attended or attend Darien Public Schools. One is a 2021 grad, and the others are at DHS in middle school. Like so many, we chose Darien as a town because of our excellent schools. I have two thoughts tonight that I wanted to share, and I will keep them brief. But first, given all that's been happening lately in our schools, which is so heartbreaking to hear about, it seems we need to remember what has been said more than once tonight, but our schools exist for children, all children. In fact, the opening words on the Darien High School page state, "We, the members of the Darien High School community, believe that learning best occurs in an environment that is safe, supportive, respectful, and intellectually challenging for all students. I hope we will continue to improve on truly being a community that is supportive and respectful of every single member of the community." Second, what makes our schools so excellent? The only answer to that is the teachers. It is my hope that we can help our teachers once again feel the support and appreciation of the community for doing all they do for our kids. They help them learn and thrive. I believe our district hires only the best. They are professionals and amazing at what they do. They make a difference every single day, and I have witnessed firsthand how their dedication and love of what they do has helped our children be lifelong learners who think, like to discuss, and follow their passions. Our teachers were not just heroes during a pandemic. They are heroes each and every day. Thank you for your time.
Antoinette Coles, thank you very much for your comments.
I'm Amy Zerbi, and I live at nine Morehouse Drive. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'd like to start out by thanking Mr. Dineen for his comments. I truly did appreciate them. Many people, including myself, moved to Darien because of the schools. Yet now, parents do not like the schools as they prefer to censor our teachers and our curriculum. Does that make sense? Let's be clear. Although our children's education is a partnership between the schools and the community, the greatest asset of our schools is our teachers. I repeat, the greatest asset of our schools is our teachers. We are all aware of the recent open episodes of hate at DHS. Those responsible have been disciplined, but the pain runs deep. If any one of our students displayed racism, they would be disciplined. If any employee displayed racism, they would be disciplined. We expect our board members to be disciplined as well. We hold you accountable, and you need to hold each other accountable. I grew up as one of the few Jews in the small town of Wilmington, Delaware. I was not allowed into some people's homes simply because I was Jewish. We had incidents of hate as well, and the town would brush these incidents under the rug. My parents always told me to just ignore the hate. Stay quiet. Well, I will not stay quiet when I see incidents of hate in our schools, in our community, and on our board. Can you believe that members of the community actually criticized our Black Student Union? I know that you can, because you saw the comments too. To all of the Darien Public School staff, I support you. To our students who have been bullied due to the color of their skin, ethnicity, religion, ability, gender identity, and sexual identity, I support you. To anyone who feels like an outsider, is the last to be chosen on a sports team, or who sits alone at the lunch table, I support you, and I am not alone in my support.
Thank you, Amy. I think we might have a student that has joined us. And I'd like to, if the students want to speak, because I know it's a school night, please. Thank you.
Black don't crack. That's what it is. Okay.
Just if you could state your name and address. Thank you.
I'm Kyla Johns. I live at ninety-one Raymond Street. Today, I would like to express the utter importance of teaching an inclusive history in schools and comment on the recent occurrences of hate that have happened at Darien High School. I am a DHS alumna. I coach Darien Junior League Field Hockey. I serve on the YWCA board. I was a 2021 YWCA Woman of Distinction. I have led protests all over Connecticut and New York, and I am the president of an education reform organization in Darien called Rage Time. I have been an active member of our community, continuing to improve our community in every way that I can. And now it is time for us to all step up as a community and change the way that our town interacts with anything that it deems as different. I have always been different. I'm a Black and Native American bisexual woman who has lived in Darien since 2010. The things that have been said to me, the things I have been called, I won't give power by repeating them here. I have had pencils put in my hair, things thrown at me in the hallways. I've had the cops called on me while I was walking my dog in the street. I've been physically and mentally bullied, and I've been put down by homophobia, racism, sexism, and much more in this town. Yet I stand here today fighting for our community to step up and be better, but it's not up to me. It's up to each of us individually to choose to work towards dismantling oppression of all kinds. It starts in each of our homes and in the school system, learning about marginalized histories while providing teachers the proper resources to have appropriate conversations about diversity, equity, and inclusion. If you are taught the history of a people when you're at a young age, an age where your moral compass has not been altered by the society you are surrounded by, it humanizes that group of people. The most terrifying and detrimental thing for an oppressive society is when the people they discriminate against are humanized, and the actions that have been taken against them become atrocities. If we are looked at as animals without a valuable history, we can be put in cages and treated as such. If we are seen as savages acting out of rage and not mothers and fathers fighting for their children's right to live, we can be shot down in the streets and have our communities bulldozed over to make room for gentrification. This is why it has to be mandated that at all levels of schooling, marginalized history is taught in the curriculum. That includes all marginalized groups such as the Indigenous, Latinx, the LGBTQIA+ community, immigrants, and the disabled community, as well as Black histories. We must now take responsibility in creating a cohesive student body and not one that is divided. We, as a community, sit here and discuss such axes of hate and how they could occur at the high school when the answer is right in front of us, because they haven't been taught a compassionate, inclusive, accurate history, and at turn, it has created a divide between what they consider to be normal and what they deem as different. As a Black woman who went to DHS, I can tell you none of this hate speech is new. It is a continuation of hate that has been spewed out without consequence for years. I urge every person who is listening to understand dismantling racism is not an easy task. It will take every single member of this board, every single member of this community, working together towards a brighter, more welcoming, and inclusive future.
Thank you for speaking, and thanks for coming back as an alumni. Anyone else in the room? Yes, please come up to the podium. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Natasha Toma. I live at six McLaren Road South. And first, I want to thank the students who spoke tonight, each and every one of them. It was an act of bravery that was unparalleled in the last couple of weeks. I was deeply moved by their statements. I had no idea. And I think that the last week, we talked about humanizing these events is exactly what needs to happen, and that now we're really getting somewhere. We need to hear exactly what's happening. We need to know that. And I believe that diversity, equity, and inclusion is going, only going to happen if we all work together and we get to hear stuff like that. So I want to thank them. I mean, they were so articulate. I'm like, oh my God. I mean, their comments were better than a lot of the adults that I've heard. So, um, I do want to say, thank the board for putting together a curriculum review board. The big question that we have is who will be on that board? I think we should probably look at some of the women who spoke tonight, the students, and consider them. So if the board would ask the administration, I think it's Mr. Tranberg, who is in charge of putting that together, you know, how that will be assembled and how we get viewpoints from everyone so that we can work together, that we have teachers who are involved. One of the things that the students said was that they really wanted more professional development, both with the teachers and with the athletic directors and coaches. And so I think that that is, that's a great start. The teachers, I read that letter from the teachers, you know, and if they're feeling like they're under attack, we need to protect them by giving them a framework to work within, right? And so if we can work together to give them a framework of, you know, you're, you're safe working within this, then there's nothing to, there's nothing to go after, you know? So I think if everybody has a voice here, that's really vital, and that the assembly of putting together this team is, is critical. It's important to have, you know, lots of different viewpoints, but particularly from the marginalized communities, we need to hear more about what's going on so we can address that specifically. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I see people are coming in from the outside as seats become vacant. So thank you. Please just step up to the podium. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Leela Buckdun, and I live at twelve Dubois Street, and I am the co-chair of the DHSPA. Thank you to the board and the administration for your time tonight. I quote, "Darien schools are the best of the best. They hire only the best teachers." Excellence of education is why so many of us chose Darien as the place to raise our families. This excellence comes from the talented, dedicated professionals educating our students from kindergarten through senior year. Our teachers should be celebrated and supported for what they do every day. They go above and beyond for all of our students. Our teachers should feel safe. Our teachers should feel safe to teach. They should feel safe to be the exceptional teachers they are. If they do, they will continue to provide our children with the highest level of teaching, preparing our children to thrive and succeed long after they have left Darien. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hi, Katrina O'Connor, 15 Highland Avenue. I have some prepared remarks, but I think, Mr. Deneen, you covered almost everything that I had to say. So I'm just gonna be a little bit more human tonight. Not that I'm saying you're not human, but I'm saying it's a personal story. Some of you haven't seen me here since we were battling with the special ed crisis a few years ago, and if some of you do remember, that was a very tough time for a lot of us parents who had children with disabilities. And we worked through that crisis. We worked with the state. We worked with professionals. We worked with our teachers. We worked with our administrators, and we worked with our board, and we got through it. And I'm proud to say that I have a very happy eighth grade son at Middlesex Middle School who is accepted and loved and taught. And hearing the stories that I heard tonight about the high school, seeing the things I've seen over the last couple of weeks, I have to say, I am pretty terrified to send my son, who does not see race, does not see difference in people, he just sees friends. And I hope that you take some of the comments that you hear tonight and you put them into action. And you teach our kids, you help our kids, you help our teachers, you support our parents, because I want my son to be proud to be at Darien High School. I want to be proud for my son to be at Darien High School. It's important. It's critical. It's who we should be. It's who we are. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for speaking. Is there anyone else outside? We have a couple of empty chairs. Anyone else wants to speak while we're looking for people outside? Okay, thanks. Michelle, do you want to, we can always go back and forth. Michelle, do you want to look for our friends on Zoom?
Absolutely. Belinda Fang, you are unmuted and recognized?
Belinda, can you hear us? I think you're muted, Belinda. Can you hear us now?
Belinda Fang, 22 Beach Drive.
Could you state your name and address again? You came on through that, please.
Sure. It's Belinda Fang, 22 Beach Drive.
Thank you. If you could just speak a little louder, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Good evening, Dr. Adley, members of the Board of Ed and the Darien Education Association, who may be listening tonight. Tonight, I'd like to recognize the sentiments felt by our educators as detailed in the Darien Times op-ed piece. I'd like to encourage our teachers, that in spite of all the noise, to not be disheartened and to please press onward in educating our students in ways that spur decision-making and incorporate the importance of having different points of view. To use their expertise and teach in a way that connects different ideas and inspires creativity so that our children are rightfully prepared for life outside of Darien and for life where they can identify racism and discrimination and be able to stand up for what's right. There is a genuine need for deeper thinking, especially as our society continues to evolve. And in this town, where we are lacking of almost nothing, ironically, there is a noticeable void of challenging our youth to participate in critical thinking, to pinpoint issues and collect information, to examine, scrutinize, and decide what's relevant, to self-evaluate, draw conclusions, and then finally, to explain their reasoning. Critical thinking requires deeper analysis, and deeper analysis produces deeper understanding, resulting in individuals who feel empowered to be independent, innovative, and successful, not only in academics but in real life. Critical thinking blasts through the surface level of a topic, and it is the pinnacle of all learning, where information begets knowledge, and knowledge begets wisdom. And it can only be done if there is a mediator who is willing and afraid to lead the classroom and facilitate these hard discussions. I stand with the parents in this town who believe in the potential of our children, who support the daily efforts in challenging them, and ask that our educators continue to do so. I'm grateful for the opportunities teachers are creating for our students, because I recognize that if they are sheltered from hard topics at school, then my efforts to educate them at home can only go so far. I echo the sentiments of wanting our children to feel protected, confident, supported, and loved, to thrive regardless of their interests, strengths, weaknesses, similarities, and differences. To that, I would also add resilient, because despite the divisiveness that our children obviously see amongst the adults, it is evident that we are raising a generation that has expressed their relentless desire for a world that holds kindness, compassion, and empathy in the highest regards. I seek to weave these values into the very walls of my home, and I ask the educators of our schools to do the same. There will be times where I will ask for clarity, for no one can deny that we even as adults need to grow. But rest assured, I will not be the one to stand in their way. Thank you.
Linda, thank you very much.
Barry Palmer, you are unmuted and recognized?
Thank you. Yep, I can hear you. Thank you. Barry Palmer, 17 Putnam Lane in Danbury. I'm not going to go with my speech tonight. I just wanted to speak to the students who were so brave to tell their story, and I think there are more students out there who have similar stories that they want to tell. I can tell you, just looking at my phone, your teachers are devastated. We are committed to making our school community a self, a safe and welcoming environment for all of you. I hope we can hear from each of the board members tonight to hear that you are committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our students deserve to hear from you, and they deserve better from all of us. Thank you.
Barry, thank you. Barry, if it's all right to note that you are the DEA Union President?
Oh yeah, that too. Yes.
Thank you, Barry.
John Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized?
John, can you hear us?
I sure can. Good evening, everybody. My name is John Dunn, and I live at 175 Raymond Street. I wanted to begin my comments this evening by commending the board on the creation of the Curriculum Committee. This is an important first step in promoting fact-based, unbiased lessons in our schools. Our children deserve nothing less. However, the greatest challenge lies ahead as the implementation of the committee begins. The Curriculum Committee needs to be nonpartisan and independent of Superintendent Adley and his administration. An effective and well-implemented curriculum committee wouldn't just benefit students and parents, it will also be beneficial to teachers. Like many other concerned parents in town, I read the Darien Times op-ed from the DEA leadership yesterday. Here is an excerpt, quote, "The reality is, Darien teachers don't feel safe. Every minute of the day, we are now second-guessing our teaching instincts, wondering if here's a training, professional development, relationship building, and hard work will somehow be used as a weapon in the political war that is raging in this community. We second-guess what we say, what we teach, and how we teach it," end quote. Despite the DEA's leadership's insertion of violent descriptive language like war and weapon into a community discussion that has been animated but peaceful, it is hard not to empathize with teachers in classrooms. A strong curriculum committee will help provide clarity and transparency for all of Darien public school stakeholders. Having grown up in town, attending Tokenique, Henley, Middlesex, and DHS, I have experienced firsthand how wonderful our public education system can be. Today's students deserve an unbiased education. The curriculum committee is a positive development for increased transparency, and I would ask the board to do it right. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, John.
Carolina Magui, you are unmuted and recognized?
Good evening. My name is Carolina Magui, and I am in 28 Kansas Lane, and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. Before I read what I prepare, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Deneen for his words tonight. I really, really appreciate them, and I hope we follow through with them. And I want to commend each and every student that stood up and spoke to us. It's heartbreaking, and I want you all to know that you have contingents of parents that are standing behind you and will support you no matter what. Here we go. We say we are very proud of our schools. We have one of the best school systems in the US, and certainly in Connecticut, and many, many people move to Darien for our public schools. But you would not believe that from what I have seen happen in our town the last couple of weeks, or what I've seen and have read about our students and teachers. It's heartbreaking. Here we are today, entrenched in what looks like a civil war that mirrors what we are seeing at the national level, where decency and respect have gone out the window, where we are allowing bullying, where we are failing our kids, and where it seems we are willing to sacrifice our own children's educations in order to make sure our personal agenda is supported by what we are teaching at our schools. We hire the best qualified teachers. We hire the best superintendent and administration we could find for our public school system, but here we are trying to burn the house down. How do we expect these people to continue to work under these conditions? At first, we demanded of them to teach our children during the pandemic, at the cost of sacrificing their own families or mental health. Then we demanded for them to teach our children in person, even if many felt uncomfortable or not ready to do it. Then we wanted no more masks in schools, even though it's literally what our governor, under his executive order, requires because of local control. Do we know what our medical experts that have been advising the town and the school think? Why bother and ask? I have yet to hear them actually say that not wearing masks is the way to go. And now, a small group of very loud parents are demanding to literally have teachers' lessons plans shared with them, because they might be indoctrinating our kids or teaching them not our values. So what is next? Their heads? Yes, I'm being somewhat hyperbolic, but you all get my point. If you're not happy with our school system, we're teaching our kids about diversity, equity, and inclusion, about pronouns, we're preparing them for the real world outside of the invisible walls that surround our town, to exposing them to the curriculum-approved material prepared by experts in their field, because it does not jive with your values or your personal beliefs, with stronger consequences for those that hurt their fellow students. Where a slap on the hand is not enough, you have a choice. You can either homeschool your children or send them to a private school of your choice that would teach them what you would like. But public schools do not work for a small group of loud parents. They are for the benefit of all the kids that go to them, and as far as I know, we do have one of the best ones in the country. I see it with my own eyes, through my children. We all repeat that ad nauseam. We have the best schools, our teachers are the best. We have issues, but we can do the hard things to fix them. We can show our children from today on that we will do better. We must do better, so don't ruin our schools. And I implore you to shut down the websites that are so damaging as well. It is time to stop. You do not speak for most of the parents in Darien. It doesn't matter what your email address is.
Belinda, you're at, you're at your time. Thank you very much.
Carrie Vomaka, you are unmuted and recognized?
Can you hear us, Carrie?
I can now. Hi, my name is Carrie Vomaka, and I live at 24 Salt Box Lane. I'm here tonight to speak to our teachers in response to the op-ed in the Darien Times. I am sorry you don't feel safe. I support you. I know you are making personal and professional sacrifices every day to teach our children and to help them develop into thoughtful, compassionate adults. To do this, I entrust you with exercising discretion and nuance when warranted to create an inclusive environment of learning where all children are treated fairly and with care. From what I can tell, most parents in this town feel similarly. We support you and believe in the system that is in place today to ensure you are operating inside the lines of your job description while not being so prescriptive that you lose your passion for teaching. I also want you to know that the fears you express about having your lessons be twisted or taken out of context are real. I worry about this, too. I've watched the chatter on social media unfold over the past several weeks with bewilderment. A virtual forum is not where productive conversation happens. The best antidote to rhetoric is calm, open, and non-threatening conversation. I'm sure you feel the same way, which is why I feel strongly that our teachers must know they are supported. Controversy makes for effective politics when elections are near, but we must recognize that what benefits a political campaign can do lasting damage to a community. So I ask, what parent actually wants to micromanage their child's courses? I think we can all agree, in the age of Google Classroom, many of us want less responsibility for navigating our children's academic lives. We must trust the system and each other. Parents, talk to your children. Make sure the lines of communication are open, so you are not surprised by what they are learning. Model tolerance and kindness. Take up your concerns directly with your teachers or start a conversation with your principal. Teachers and administrators, you must hear parents out, but we know you are not required to comply with everything asked, nor should you be. Let discipline be swift and fair if necessary, and use your judgment to adjust curriculum. You should be allowed the discretion to teach and manage our schools in alignment with the expectations set out in our governing docs and strategic plan. To our teachers, we want to be your partners in education. I have full confidence we will get there. It will always be a journey and hard work, but please know, we are right here with you. Thank you.
Carrie, thank you very much.
Kathleen Thompson, you are unmuted and recognized?
Kathleen Thompson, 53, Good Wyche River Road. To the members of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. As a new family to this community, I was saddened to read the op-ed written by the Darien Education Association leadership. I found the entire piece dripping with contempt for parents within this community, and I have to ask, is this really the voice of all the Darien teachers? Or is the DEA leadership utilizing a tactic to intimidate parents within this community who are vocalizing their legitimate concerns? The DEA states, "The reality is, Darien teachers don't feel safe," and will somehow be used as a weapon of the political war that is raging within this community. I have to ask, who's propelling this political war? I question the true intent of the DEA when I think the word choice used throughout this op-ed was dragging through mud.
Kathleen, can you pause for a moment, please? Jeff, what's going on with our?
I turned off their mic.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen, sorry, we had someone else whose speaker was on. I apologize. Please continue.
No worries. Thank you. The DEA states, "The reality of Darien teachers don't feel safe. I question the true intent of the DEA when I think about their word choice used throughout the op-ed, such as dragging through mud. Am I going to be accosted? Weapon? War? Raging? Protect ourselves? Broken? Battered? Ambushed? Vilified? Scared? Casualties destroyed?" This language is not only aggressive, but it's inflammatory and begs to question, who's making this political? The DEA states, "Darien educators did not become teachers to push our political ideologies on children." This is fantastic, and what I believe all parents want. Let's use this as our starting point to something we can all agree upon. Let's make it official and include it in the overall mission statement of the Curriculum Oversight Committee. Let's ensure that this committee includes parents from both sides of the aisle. Your willingness to take this step will help restore the trust and support of parents in this community. The Darien parents I know love our teachers. Maybe this message has gotten lost in all the noise. Let's work to find a common ground. Let's start by doing what the DEA suggests and remove political ideologies from school curriculum. Thank you.
Kathleen Thompson, please make some comments.
Rosine Beccarelli, you are unmuted and recognized?
Hi, it's Rosine and Joe.
Hi, it's Rosine N. Joe Baccarelli here from 29 Bailey Avenue. Our children are in elementary school, but we are in awe of the senior students who spoke tonight and are fully in support of them and their calls for action. We're also honored to have the opportunity to listen to Kyla John's insights as an important leader in our community. Further, we want to acknowledge the Darien Times op-ed titled, "We Cannot Let This Divisiveness Destroy the District." It was deeply honest and powerful and sad because of how accurately it describes what we can see and feel happening. We empathize with the stress and fear our teachers are expressing. To our teachers and principals, we can see you and your passion on behalf of our kids. We know why you became educators. We trust you and will continue to stand beside you. We echo your call for all of us in the community to work together to disentangle you from political narratives so you can go back to being your dynamic and impassioned selves and so you can better help us support our kids' ability to thrive in this increasingly complex world. Thank you for all that you do for us even in the toughest of times. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Alex Taylor, you are unmuted and recognized.
Alex Taylor, can you hear us?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, we can hear you. Thanks.
I am Alex Taylor for Behringer Road, speaking on behalf of the Darien Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee. I want to first say thank you to the Board of Ed and on a personal note, thank you, Mr. Dunne and all the people who have spoken today. It's really very moving. We wrote this statement after the formation of the Curriculum Committee, so I wanted to just put that into context. With the reinstatement of the Curriculum Committee of the Board of Ed, we ask that the Board of Ed include special ed goals, methods, materials, assessments, and the planning and oversight of the Curriculum Committee. As a committee, as a curriculum refers to the broad educational and interactive system of instruction and learning, we believe that special education falls within the scope of the committee's future work. Thank you very much and thank you for the hard work that you are all doing.
Thank you for your comments this evening.
User last name Clop, you are unmuted and recognized.
It looks like you're still on mute.
Okay, I think we're good. Roland Clow, Roland Clow for Duffy's Lane. This is my work laptop and I'm known as Mr. Clow. I work in Bridgeport Public School as a restorative facilitator. I mediate juvenile criminal cases in Stanford as a diversionary and restorative practice. I didn't work preparing marks because typically I'm used to just listening to people speak and then trying to figure out where they're coming from from their perspective, which means taking a deliberately neutral stance. I'm on an affiliated motor. I've been watching discussions. I've seen people struggle to make space for opinions that they didn't share or that made them feel uncomfortable. And this really goes for both sides. We are endeavoring to create a community, but we're talking about, rather than a community, we're talking about different identities, different policies. By its very nature, social-emotional learning is a relational concept. By its very nature, DEI is a relational concept. You can't build them without having some sort of means to repair harm when harm is caused. We heard a lot of harm that was caused here tonight. Harm to the community, to teachers, to students, to parents, to the entire community. We have to look at it as one community. And what else in the room is we are not talking about people who are doing harm. We are discarding them. We are dismissing them. We are not listening to what their brokenness or their background might be, and they might very well be struggling as well. These are things that can be unearthed with restorative practices. If instead of taking punitive approaches and looking for quote-unquote "justice", which is a euphemism for punishment, if we dig deep and we try to figure out, let people who have been harmed speak their piece and let them explain how they were harmed to the people who harmed them and let the people who harmed them do the same to the people they harmed. We might actually grow as a community rather than just push these things aside. We need to invest as a community in these practices. A good example was the test that was stolen, the midterm test. A lot of students were harmed and they wanted to be heard. There was no process for the people who harmed them to address the people that they harmed. And I think to be failed our children when we didn't do that. So I guess that's probably my three minutes, but I really encourage us to look at restorative practices. We do listen to violent community in Bridgeport, Connecticut, and it actually brings results.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening.
Louise Waylett Brown, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you.
Louise, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
You're gonna have to speak louder or turn your microphone up. We can barely hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
That's a little better. Just if you could speak as loud as possible, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I'm so grateful for the leadership that Duke Dunne has demonstrated tonight in his opening speech. Duke, honestly, I just have renewed faith in the Board of Ed and it is just so critical at this time. I'm glad you mentioned also the comment made about our teachers being bullied. It couldn't be further from the truth. It was disappointing and doesn't represent most of us in this town. If the Board truly believes in zero tolerance of hate and hate groups, the Board should investigate and potentially find a way to shut down any hate groups, especially those that may be attached to positions, people who have positions within Darien Town Government. I'm also so very proud of the young women who have spoken tonight. Eloquent, poised, and powerful. Let's not let them down. I hope they saw in their adult lives. In reference to intolerance at DHS, I would like to add a note that oftentimes our school administrators, their ties, their hands are tied. They face parents who lawyer up. They are doing the best they can possibly do and we have the best we could find. We know you care and we hope you too feel empowered tonight as the educational experts in the room to continue doing the great work that you do un-micromanaged by some of the members of the Board of Ed. Thank you very much.
Louise, thank you for your comments tonight.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there anyone else in the room? I think we have everyone in from outside.
We have another raised hand on Zoom.
Great. Thank you, Michelle.
Scott Widahun, you are unmuted and recognized.
Scott, can you hear us?
Oh, we can hear you.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Armel. This is Scott.
Hi, thank you. You're on just your name and your address. Thank you.
Sure. I'm Armel. This is Scott. We're 12 Fitch. I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but I'm so moved by the way that the students in particular, and it's not lost on me that I believe the current students are all white, standing up in defense of themselves and their classmates. I also want to publicly voice my support for the Black Student Union. I'm glad to see that maybe the voices tonight are reaching people and people are hearing them and it sounds like some people are maybe surprised to hear some of this stuff. Personally, I'm not surprised. I think that there are kids of color going to school in our town who have been screaming about this stuff for quite some time. And to hear that they have been, you know, talked about, let's put it that way, talked about in some of these closed groups, instead of people listening to them and trying to hear what they have to say, they're just actual people, actual children who are just tennis balls in the volley. I think somebody needs to go on record speaking up for them. I'm so proud to see so many people saying it, but I want it to be acknowledged that they've been saying this. They've been saying this for a long time, for anyone who cared enough to listen. So hopefully we can continue listening and maybe bring a little more empathy into the discussion. So to any kids of color who've been talking about this for a long time, I support you. I'm here too and I personally have also experienced, how would I put it? I guess we'll just say racism, some racist behavior here in this town. It's not fair that it's on our students to check us. You know, we're the adults in the room. We need to support them and talk about what's happening. So I'm grateful for the kids who spoke tonight. I'm grateful for the kids who've been saying it for a while. And I'm here and I've seen it too. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much for speaking tonight.
I'm giving them a second. No more raised hand at this time.
Anyone? I think we have everyone in from outside. Anyone here? All right. Again, thank you all. Thank you very much for speaking. For those students and alumni for taking the time to come this evening. Thank you very much. You're listening and we heard all your words. Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone, and I thank you to everyone who spoke, especially to our courageous young people. I think your voice spoke volumes to your character and your advocacy and we are listening. Thank you, Mr. Dunne, for your comments this evening. Clearly, as relayed by our wonderful young people, it's been a challenge in a few weeks in the district on a variety of topics. Let's remember that despite being back in person, returning to school this year has been particularly trying for our staff and our students, as elegantly relayed this evening. This is a time when the staff and children need our collective guidance and support the most. Let us resolve whatever differences we may have by living out our core values of respect and civility for each other, but most especially for our children. Thank you to those members of the High School Climate Committee, the parents, the students, the teachers, the administration, who worked to put together an intervention, albeit what we heard of how some people have received it, how some of our children received it, how some students may have received that intervention that initially tried to address issues of bigotry, antisemitism, racism, sexism, and all forms of discrimination. As we've moved forward to look at intermediate programs, we have reviewed a number of those. This particular Thursday, the principals of the middle school and the high school and central services staff will review two in-depth proposals, one from the National Council of Community Injustice around things like student voice and restorative actions, and also a secondary proposal from the consultant Ken Shelton, who will be working with the district's DEI committee. I am proud that the community and the Board has gone on record as saying that this is an important topic and they've done so through the adoption of the strategic plan. We've also reached out to the Interaction Institute for Social Change in Boston to help facilitate a community-wide discussion on this important topic. Thank you to everyone for your contributions during the past couple of weeks around these issues. Just a cave caps convention, there's no real easy way to transition from that, so you'll forgive me trying to do so. The Caves Caps Convention is Friday, November 12th. There are limited in-person participation for the convention. It's only one day. It used to be like two and a half days. Interestingly, they've dropped out all the student participation, which is an interesting thing, just as we are increasing it. But Friday, November 12th, and I'll talk to the Board in terms of your participation and those who like to participate, they'll either be in-person or remote or a combination. And this is a good opportunity for one of our, actually one of the Board's goals, to continue to participate in professional development. The NEASelf, as we heard this evening, actually, the NEASelf study for parents was sent out today and that gives an opportunity for parents to participate and give them feedback to the committee's visitation. I want to commend those people who participated, the students who participated in the fall music concert. We had every ensemble performing, which I think was really the first time we've ever had in the fall, every ensemble actually participate. And it just was good and uplifting to hear the school and the student body come together and voice and also perform. I hope the kids at some level are enjoying the homecoming this week. There's a variety of activities of dress, Blue Wave, Pride, and prep rallies happening. October 20th at the middle school, Thriving Youth Task Force will be presenting the youth asset survey that was presented to the Board at the last meeting. Good luck to the students who are doing PSATs tomorrow. There is a special schedule for students, but we wish the students who are participating the best of luck on this assessment. Henley, we are making a proposal tonight for the makeup, the two makeup days, so we'll hear that this evening. There's a series of technology workshops, developmentally designed for elementary, middle school, and high school. Everything from time on screens to tic-tac to digital portfolios that are left. So that will also be posted online, so there's an opportunity to participate here in the boardroom, but they'll also be posted online if you can't make it. The facilities meeting for Thursday has been canceled. The Board will receive an update on those particular topics. It's been canceled because of the topics themselves and the agenda is limited. We have summarized those agenda topics in a memorandum that I'll send out this evening to the Board. And if there's any of those topics that need further discussion, it can continue at either a board meeting or reschedule a facilities committee. And those are all my notices.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. We will move on to approval of minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 28th, 2021. Mrs. Stein, second by Mrs. Ackman. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to Board Committee reports. Mrs. Stein.
The Policy Committee is scheduled to meet again next Friday at 8:30. Just to put on your calendars.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. I want to shout out from an Ox Ridge perspective to Katie Loveland and Principal Foresaw for a great presentation to the local Ox Ridge community as to kind of where things are at with the construction of the school and the timeline that has changed a little on the move. So a lot of hard work has gone in to meeting with the community and talking to them and keeping them informed. So thank you. The next Ox Ridge Building Committee meeting is Thursday at 10 o'clock. We will move on to presentations and discussions. Dr. Adley, update on schools.
So we'll talk a little bit about the metrics first. And the metrics, this actually just increased slightly from the last presentation. So it's off a little bit from the town's feedback because the state does different timing and actually uses occasionally different metrics. So, but the general idea is that we have reduced number of cases. Actually, I think this was as of Ken, five, and this is the most latest one, which we have one case in 12 quarantines. So the news is good in that capacity. I want to thank our parents for their understanding. I know the last thing you want to do is quarantine. It's your child. The last thing we want to do is do that to you. Thank you to the schools because a lot of these are... a lot of these are at elementary level, and we have been able to avoid quarantine and full classes, so that, that has been helpful. I will say that we have no evidence of, of the spreading in our schools, or we have no evidence of those people who we have quarantined actually contacting COVID. So those are two statements that we've made at different levels and different capacities over the last year or so, but that's the case at the moment. I don't see, I haven't been on a call this morning with the State Department of Education and the Department of Public Health. I see no movement on their desire to change that position on quarantine or otherwise. I just, I just don't see that happening, but we'll, we'll, we'll see. On the testing, the school-based, uh, school-based testing, we had last week, two hundred and twenty-six students who were tested. Parents who volunteered and wanted to participate in that. We actually have two fifty coming up for this week. And we have no, everybody tested negative in that particular testing group. Students, clinics for ages five to twelve, it seems like we, this is going to be opened up. There will be news coming by the end of the month. We have worked, Alicia has worked with David Knopf, our health director, and Tim Canafick, our, our medical advisor. So we're ready actually to go with a series of six Saturdays for our students. So soon as the green light is given, we'll have, that's already being set up. So we're really ready to roll that out, and that's the idea that was asked today, does that mean that kids have to be quarantined to come to school? No, that's not the case. But again, this will be an opportunity for parents to participate, and hopefully that will be an important step for us. Our staff vaccination status, we have about ninety-five percent of our, of our complete staff vaccinated. Everyone is participating either and haven't been vaccinated or in the testing, weekly testing that's going on. And that is being done by progressive diagnostics. So they do that weekly for our staff in middle school and elementary schools. For our high school, we have to go locally, most locally to Newark to get tested. But that, that has proved, well, we're, we're in good shape that way. Also, we've been, uh, talked about Ox Ridge, Ox Ridge. Our workers at Ox Ridge technically do not have to submit to that process. However, if that should change, because they're not in the buildings, if that should change, they are all ready to go to comply. So that, that they're in compliance, even though they don't need to be in compliance at this particular point. So the American Rescue Act, the IDA grants for the respective numbers, as you see them. We have submitted this and for just contracted services. So we haven't delineated beyond that. And if we have to do, if we have to resubmit in some other capacity, we will do that, but it's simply for contracted services, for recovery services for students. So that's the category for OT and PT, but we, the category that it has to go under is contracted services. So instead of assure with you what we would submit, that is what we're submitting. Details here, you've seen before. You can see some of the numbers going down again. And the weekly, the numbers down again at the weekend, so happy to address any of those questions.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. I'll open it up to board comments and questions. Mrs. McCammon.
Dr. Adley, on the IDA grant where you talked about OT and PT, are those, do we have incremental costs that are, that are recuperative in, in that volume, or is it? How is that working?
So, so currently they are unidentified. We haven't identified the actual services that are required at this particular point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Mrs. Ackman.
But they are anticipated needs, correct?
Yes. But the money's there for whatever, whatever makeup services we need to, to provide.
So to Mrs. McCammon's question, we, we anticipate the student need based on what we're seeing right now, which is how we can apply for the grant.
We have not identified the student, it is the student need right now. As they are identified, then it, that it'd be utilized.
We just anticipate the need. We just, we simply anticipate the need.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Any other questions around school status update? Anything else that, Dr.?
No, it's actually, it's actually pretty good in that, in that capacity. We're, we're doing well, and and that's in large part by, by the community's commitment to vaccinations.
Okay, moving along. Presentation and discussion on, sorry, report on testing SAT, ACT, AP, S-Back, NGSS. Mr. Tranberg, Ms. Emanuelson, Mrs. Droller, and Mr. Dockum.
Good evening, everyone. We have a, a pretty dense, comprehensive presentation for you tonight. As you'll see, the data this year is a bit more complex than you've seen in the past because it's presented in, in three different ways, so we tried to make that as concise as possible. I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Julie Droller to start, who is our Director of Elementary Education. On the memo, you might have noticed that it reads Director of Assessment K-12. She doesn't have a new title. That was just part of her job description, and then that's the capacity in which the memo was written. So with that, I will turn it over to Julie. Megan Emanuelson will join, and we do have Mr. Dockum, Mr. Janosko, Dr. Bellows on standby if we need them for any specific content questions after we make it through the presentation. So we'll try to get through all of the deck and then do questions following that.
Mr. Tranberg, you did say it, but I just want to be again, just in your official new capacity, welcome. It's, it's nice to see you in that, in your new capacity, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Adley, and the Cabinet. Mrs. Emanuelson and I are very pleased to have the opportunity to share the results of our district-wide testing for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. We're very proud of our talented students, committed faculty, and supportive school leaders. Despite a challenging year with unusual testing circumstances at times, our students once again delivered impressive results, certainly a reflection of the hard work of both students and staff. It is important to note that the state of Connecticut has stated that districts should not compare these result, these scores to other districts. There are simply too many inconsistencies and variables for any comparisons to be considered reliable for informing instruction or planning. We have also been told not to compare two thousand twenty-one results to two thousand nineteen or years prior. While we will present the data from our Derg schools this evening, as well as historical data for context, we will not be drawing any direct comparisons or inferences based on this data. As we do in all years, we'll, we will examine our own results and determine appropriate next steps across curriculum areas. This report will include the results from both the state mandated testing in all grades, as well as optional testing that our high school students can use in their college admissions process. We will present this data in two parts, working from elementary up through high school. And these are, this is a summative testing overview. And I'm not going to spend too much time on this because I know that you can read it. The Smarter Balance is our annual standardized measure that provides a snapshot of student progress towards college and career readiness. Students receive a total score, and then they receive one of four achievement levels. So I want to start here with this slide. This year, data was presented by, data was disaggregated by student learning model. So what you will see here, again, just for context, these are our mathematics scores for three previous testing years. We didn't test in two thousand twenty. And then this year, for students fully or mostly in person, and those hybrids. What I want to point out a few things. You'll notice that in grades three and four, we were pretty consistent. There was a slight dip in fifth grade. In grade six, you'll notice thirty-five percent of students fully, mostly in person. So that number actually represents twenty students. And these are students who had significant learning needs and were recommended for in-school learning. So there were only twenty students that were fully in person for most of the year. The majority of our students in middle school, or at least in sixth, well, all across sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, were hybrid for most of the year. The reason in grade eight that we do have great a, a significant percentage of, of scores for students that were fully, mostly in person and for hybrid is because our students in grade eight returned to full in-person learning on January twenty-fifth. And our students in seventh grade came back February eighth, and then our students in sixth grade came back in March. So fully in person is students who were in school seventy-five percent or more of the time. Hybrid represents students who are here twenty-five to seventy-five percent of the time, and mostly or fully remote is less than twenty-five, and so we didn't have a significant number of students to report. Where you will see shaded in boxes, that means that there were fewer of twenty, fewer than twenty students who took the test in person. So it's too few, a subgroup for a score. So I know that's complicated. This was from our preliminary data, which we received this summer, and I thought it was a good slide so that you could see that pretty, you know, while, while everybody's scores dipped in this year because of everything that we were living through. We had less instructional time as a result of the pandemic, social emotional learning. We had logistics of navigating kids zooming and logging on and hybrid and in person. We really focused on math and, and ELA instruction in our middle schools and our high school as well. We didn't have science labs, so all of those things obviously impacted our scores. But what you'll see is that from two thousand seventeen really to two thousand twenty-one, our scores did not change so significantly. So these are the same two charts for ELA, and you'll notice the same, pretty much the same trends and that same number in sixth grade. And again, for ELA as well, our scores are pretty much consistent, but slight dip last year, last spring. So the next step for us, which is really the most important, these scores, we, we do analyze them. We look for opportunities for program enhancement in terms of curriculum and professional development. We identify specific students performing below goal for support in SRBI. We're utilizing our literacy interventionists for in, in-class support for what we're calling boost groups, and we're providing differentiated instruction, particularly for those students that were approaching goal that, that we want to make sure that, that we can move up their scores. We're prioritizing our professional development for mathematics in grade five. If you will recall, last year was the first year of our implementation of Math and Focus. So our teachers were supposed to have professional learning in the spring of two thousand twenty. Obviously, that didn't happen. And, and last year, we had, we had nobody coming into our schools for professional learning, so it just wasn't a focus. We're also integrating interim assessment blocks as an essential component of our professional learning. So those are all of the things that are being done this year. Our Next Generation Science Assessment, this is an online assessment for students in grades five, eight, and eleven. There are twelve standalone items and six item clusters, which is kind of a performance task. Students are answering a series of questions based on scientific phenomenon. Measure students' performance across three dimensions, disciplinary core ideas, science and engineering practice, and cross-cutting concepts. Again, what you will notice here is that most of our students were fully, mostly in person. And then there were some students who were hybrid, or too few students for anything to be scored on fully or mostly remote. So this is fifth grade, and these are students that have met or exceeded goal. Same with eighth grade and eleventh grade. And then this chart represents each grade and the percentage of students that met or exceeded goal in two thousand nineteen, which was the first year of the test. And again, last spring in two thousand twenty-one. So although our scores did dip as expected, they're, they're still pretty strong considering the shorter instructional time and the lack of labs in particular. So I know that was a lot in a short amount of time. I'm now going to turn this over to Megan Emanuelson, our Guidance Counselor for six twelve, and then if you have any questions, we'll take them at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Can everybody hear me?
Megan, I think you'll need to speak just a little louder.
Okay, I will do my best, Mr. Janine. Is that better?
That is better. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so sorry I can't be there with you in person, and do appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight. And I will thank Julie in advance for helping click through some of these slides. We all know I'm not great at multitasking. So as we start to get into the high school data, I do want to note that we're going to be talking about two different sets of SAT data. So first, the Connecticut SAT School Day, which, as you know, is our state mandated test for juniors. And then later in the presentation, we're going to talk about national SAT data. This is an important note because it's actually reflective of two different cohorts of kids. So the first being Connecticut SAT School Day that will be presented is really our current seniors, the class of two thousand twenty-two, who took the tests this past spring. The SAT data that will be presented later as part of the college admissions data is actually the class of two thousand twenty-one. So Connecticut SAT School Day was given during the school day in March of two thousand twenty-one. The test assesses English and math. There is no writing on the school day test. It is a usable score for college admissions, so that's been really helpful for our kids. This year, our juniors will take the test on March thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. Julie, next slide, please. So as Julie mentioned, the state of Connecticut disaggregated the Connecticut SAT School Day data as well based on our attendance records in PSIS. So this slide shows you the different categories and the percentage of in-person days in each category. Julie described them earlier. It also, the numbers in parentheses are the numbers of our juniors who were classified in each of those categories. So as you can see, the overwhelming number of our juniors, two hundred and seventy-eight, were considered in-person learners last year, which is wonderful. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this slide shows our Dergay districts across all three learning models. So we were trying to do seven districts across three different learning models with two different scores. So I'm hopeful that this is a concise way to represent the data. But as you can see, most districts did not have a comparable learning model to ours. Once again, our juniors performed very well, and the scores are consistent with past years. Next slide, please. Thank you. These are the percentages of students meeting on level three or level four. So level three is considered an adequate understanding. Level four is considered a thorough understanding. This is in ELA, and once again, you can see our students did extremely well. Next slide. This is the same information for math. Okay, next slide, please. And then, Mr. Janine, I'll pause here. I don't know if you'd like to take board questions at the end or just now for the state mandated before we move on to the college admissions.
So yeah, I think that's a good time to pause and see what questions or comments the board has. Thank you, both of you for the presentation and all the data. Thank you. I'll open it up to board questions or comments. Mrs. Ackman.
Thank you, Mrs. Droller, for the presentation. I have a question. I know that we can't use this data to, to compare districts or to compare to last year, but how is it helping us? To, to compare districts or to compare to last year, but how is it helping us plan for the upcoming test taking? What gaps are we seeing or, or is there planned areas in which we know we need to help our kids? So where are we looking forward on this?
So, so we don't get the actual, we don't, we don't see the test. We don't see how kids do. But what really does help us is the interim block assessments. That teachers can actually see students' responses when they take the test. We can analyze that. We can see where the, where the. Strengths and weaknesses are and they're short. There's two kinds. There's, there's. Some that are about eight to ten questions and then there's focused IABs. So those are implemented this year throughout our curriculum. So that will help us along the way. They can be used as formative assessments or they can be used as teaching tools. So we are embedding them in ELA, in right, in mathematics and in our science instruction across all grades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs.
And I just add to that, that these scores are actually serving as new baselines. So when we first talked about the, the testing cancellation the previous year. And what testing was going to be this year, they, the state was originally hoping. They'd be able to use some predictive data to kind of insert a, like a regression model to show this is how we think students would have performed this year. And they were going to give us a growth target, but they found that they were not able to do that with these scores because the data were so. Same volatile, not in a bad way, but just the way that you described data that it just wasn't reliable enough in order to do what they hoped it would do. So this is a. A fresh start for everyone with a new baseline that'll be used for a new growth target the following year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Just before I ask my question, I just want to say thank you to everybody who spoke tonight and we, I heard, I heard you and I pledge to do better and hope that we can work together. To make a better, safer environment for everybody. Moving on. I know that you said we don't get the data, the individual data for each data point of, you know, comprehension, listening for the, the smarter balance. Is there a way that you can get a sense of what areas are most needing to be boosted or is there, is there? I would just love more detail.
Right, we can a little bit. Each content area is divided up into claims. And there are three claims for, for ELA, three claims for math. And we can look at whether students exceeded, were near or at, or were below. So yes, we can pull it out that way. We can pull out subgroups. So we do, we do that kind of analysis. But not specific targets.
Right. And I'm just wondering if you see the, you know, where, where our students tested maybe. I also think it's really important that we acknowledge that these tests are a snapshot of a child's education and that this is not. You know, everyone really likes numbers, but you can't really pin a number on a student. And this is a snapshot and that's really important to remember, especially at this point. I, I guess, again, to Mrs. Akman's point, is, could you just give us a couple of examples of where you think you might be? You know, what, what is needed for professional development and what you think needs to be strengthened?
Sure, but differentiated instruction, which is in our strategic plan, is, is an area of focus. So. You know, regardless of how kids scored, we know that there are differences in some of the claims. So that's something that we're providing targeted instruction and with the extra literacy interventionist, that's been really helpful. Math in fifth grade is also another area for us as a science. We need to do some, some professional learning on NGSS and look at our units again and, and think about, you know, how we're. Addressing those three dimensions. So that's, that is all work that is ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Barrett. This is McCann.
As a part of the review of the, well, first off, thank you for the data. It was. Really interesting also to see how different learning environments impacted test scores for sure. So thank you for disaggregating that. I'm curious to understand whether you've had to make any changes to your identification process. I know this is just, again, a point in time as Mrs. Parent, excuse me, said. But are you finding that you have to be a little different about how you're identifying students who do need intervention that? Maybe you weren't expecting last year?
There are a few students who are not in SRBI that, that did not meet goal. So yes, those are students that we are, are pulling. And again, you know. We had less instructional time. We were doing such, such a big focus on social emotional, what kids were going through. So. We did anticipate that, but those are the kids that are in our meets category and there's a, there is a larger number.
I'll just, to be, we're not casting a wider net to try to catch more students. We have the same benchmarks and that we're using for entrance and exit criteria. So while there might be more, the way we're delivering the services, so the, the push in groups. Is one way where we're seeing students that are potentially on the cusp. We want to make sure we're doing those push in services before that they might qualify for. Pull out targeted instruction that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Mr. Sini.
Thank you for the data. These are all averages. So, and I'm pleased that there weren't. Large declines, but when you look through the numbers, was there any more variability, if you will, between the high and the low? And if you looked at a median versus average, would you, would you see anything different from these charts?
You know, like I said, there's certain grades that we notice certain things, but there are fluctuations every year. So. We pretty much remained, remained steady, except, you know, you can see the grades and the averages on the charts. Fifth grade math, as I said, eighth grade was another area.
But relative to other years, you didn't see large, a lower level?
Thank you, Mr. Sini. Mrs. Stein.
Sorry. My question is probably geared more towards Mr. Dockham on the NGSs. Particularly for eleventh grade. When you see the numbers, anecdotally, I know for a lot of high school students. Not being in a lab, just the physically being remote was a barrier to learning. So. In terms of what you think about doing for this year, is just being in person going to make a big difference, do you think? Or you think it's more than that? Does that make sense? Like I'm wondering if it's substantive or it's really just. Being remote, not being able to do labs, doing a lot of the science at home, it seemed to me. Anecdotally was a lot more challenging than maybe some other subjects.
Yeah, thank you. Certainly the loss of lab time and the, the loss of our teachers' abilities to provide some of those hands on inquiry based experiences last year. Would, would play a role. You know, one of the science and engineering practices is, is planning and carrying out investigations. And, and so if students aren't able to do that within the classroom in an assessment setting, they, they may struggle with, with that particular practice. It, and also I think it. You know, when we look at our testing window, this particular assessment for our eleventh graders came after. Three different rounds of AP assessments at, at the very end of an extremely trying year. And, and I don't, I don't think we can, you know, take that out of the equation. Especially for, for our eleventh graders, but certainly this year we're, we're looking at science classes. And when we go into science class, we see a much more traditional experience that our students are, are having right now.
Thank you, Mr. Dockham. Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Mrs. Akman.
Getting back to setting our new benchmarks, if, if we have new benchmarks being set this year and the state is okay with that. And then we've talked as a board in terms of wanting to make sure that our rigor. Is still there. Are we really looking at still not identifying gaps and or remediation really into next year as well?
Sorry, we're changing the benchmarks? We're not?
Well, you said there's going to be a new baseline, right? We're going to have a new baseline.
Well, this year's.
Yes, this, this years are going to be our new baseline, which we won't have that data till next year, right?
Correct.
And we are talking about increasing rigor, rigor, but we won't actually know if kids are meeting baseline. Until the experience of next year. So do we anticipate some significant? I won't put a cloth around it. Some need for me, remediation into next year?
I don't anticipate that. The, so while the test scores are baseline scores. Our benchmarks, what we use for benchmark assessments, those criteria are remaining consistent and the grade level standards are the grade level standards. So our approach has been to stay on target with the standards and remediate, for the lack of a, a better description. As we're going along, but not to stop what we're doing with, with what the curriculum is. To say, okay, we missed this. We're going to do, we're going to insert a unit here right now. Because that isn't the, that isn't the experience that we're seeing that there's such a big gap in this one idea that we need to stop everything and remediate that idea.
So you remediate around the benchmarks, take the test this year, have new standards. And then figure out if there's gaps in standards.
Yeah, so the benchmark assessments we use, the targets are still the grade level targets. And that, that's what I meant when I said we're not casting a wider net. We're not changing what a benchmark score is to determine if the student qualifies for intervention.
Okay, thank you.
So can I just get on to that? We also, throughout the year, we have benchmark assessments. We have our universal screeners. We have formative assessments. Where we're seeing what kids are doing as they're learning and we can adjust right then and there. So I would say that that is how we're ensuring that, you know, that kids are meeting the rigorous standards. As opposed to what this is just, is that the scale score for individual students is their benchmark, which will be their individual growth target.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we can move to the next part two.
Okay, part two. So we will shift gears away from the state mandated testing and talk about our college admissions testing. As you likely know, these tests are optional for students as they choose the exams that are the best reflection of their knowledge and their skills. So there certainly were some challenges with this type of testing last year. The class of two thousand twenty one was not able to take the Connecticut SAT School Day as juniors in the spring of twenty twenty. And all of the SAT and ACT tests from March through July of two thousand twenty were canceled. Despite every nearly, or maybe actually every college adopting a test optional policy last year. We wanted to be sure that any of our seniors who wanted to take a standardized test were able to do so in advance of submitting their applications in the fall. We were so pleased with district support to be able to arrange for an additional early fall ACT and SAT. Available only to DHS seniors, again, in advance of those application deadlines. So we were really proud to be able to give our students that opportunity. Next slide, please. So this is where that shift in cohort that I referenced earlier happened. So this slide is SAT national data and is reflective of the class of two thousand twenty one. So as you can see, sixty percent of the class of two thousand twenty one took the SAT at least one time. And the way that college board reports this data is the data reflects the last score that a student took, so not necessarily. The best score or the average of the scores if a student took it multiple times. So this is a three year comparison and as you can see, our students remain strong and consistent. One small note, whereas on the Connecticut SAT School Day, the English section is referred to as ELA. On the national data, it is reported out as ERW, which means evidence based reading and writing. Next slide, please. So as you can see, DHS students continue to perform well above state and national averages. And we will move on to advanced placement. So AP exams are given in May of each year, near the end of the AP courses. They are designed to assess mastery of content in a subject specific college level curriculum. The scores are reported on a one to five scale with a three being considered qualified to receive college credit. Most of these exams are two to three hours in length and a number of colleges have moved away from actually giving. Credit for these courses, but many are still using them for placement purposes or to waive a requirement. And the great news is recently the state of Connecticut, anybody who's attending at Connecticut State University and earns a three will receive college credit. They've adopted that policy at the state level. Next slide, please. This is the list of twenty, the twenty three AP courses that we offered at the high school last year. We also had students self study for several additional exams in which we did not teach the courses. Being AP Chinese, AP Psychology and AP Physics one. Students do not need to be enrolled in an AP course in order to take the AP exam. Next slide, please. So as with all the other testing we referred to, there were certainly some additional challenges to AP testing last year and we were. So proud our teachers and our students really rose to the occasion. Instead of the traditional two week testing window, Christian referenced, college board offered exams over four separate administrations. And I heard there was a secret fifth one spanning May through July. This was intended, we believe, to give schools the flexibility in timing in terms of being able to increase instructional time if we felt we needed it. And also to determine which format would be best suited for students. So many of the exams were offered paper pencil, but there were exams that were also offered in a digital format. And schools were able to, to make the decisions. So we, schools, so in most cases, the test would be paper or pencil. The majority of our tests were administered paper pencil in administration one or two, which really completed over the course of the month of May. We did complete a few tests digitally, which you can see listed in that last bullet. Next slide, please. This is our five year comparison and as you can see, the data has remained strong and consistent over time. It is quite exceptional to have eighty nine percent of our tests receive at least a three. And, and a large proportion of that being fours and fives. Twenty twenty tests were, were very different. Those were digital forty five minute tests. So again, a caution against direct comparisons with twenty twenty. Next slide, please. So just a, a quick clarification on this slide and how to interpret it. This is considered a participation in AP exams. So if we take the two thousand twenty one column. The row labeled black grad class indicates that in the class of two thousand twenty one. Sixty one point nine percent of the class took an AP exam that scored a three or better sometime during their four years of high school. The row that says for your twelfth grade indicates the percentage that scored a three on an exam during their senior year. The percentage that scored during the, of our juniors that scored and so, and so on and so forth. So that gives us a sense of. Really the percentage of the overall class that are earning a three on an exam. Next slide, please. Moving on to ACT, I had sincerely hoped to share the class of two thousand twenty one ACT score, score profile with you, but unfortunately. That data is not yet available. We did recently receive the class of two thousand twenty results. And so we are including those and I'm happy to share the twenty one profile with the board as soon as we receive them. As you may know, the ACT is scored on a one to thirty six scale and has four sections, English reading, math and science. With an optional writing section. The composite score is the average of the four sections. Colleges and universities across the country standardly accept the ACT in place of the SAT. Next slide, please. So I did want to share with you the last five years of ACT data from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty. I think it shows how strong and consistent the scores have been over time. I anticipate that the two thousand twenty one scores will follow a similar pattern and be just as strong. Next slide. And finally, these are our testing dates for two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two state mandated district wide testing. And we would love to extend a big thank you to our district and building teams for all of the hard work that they will do in successfully administering these tests to our students this year. And finally, I'm happy to take any questions about that data. Thank you so much.
Everyone on the team here, thank you so much. That's a lot of data. It's been a challenging year, but thank you for a great presentation. So I'll open up for board questions and comments. Are we good? See what a great job you did.
Thank you all.
We'll, we'll look forward to additional data as it comes in and thank you again for the presentation. Much appreciated. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for all of you online. Appreciate it. We will move on to presentation and discussion on international field trip proposal for two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three school year. Ms. Christina Maurizio, I will let you know that everyone on the board has their passports ready, their happy chaperones. And thank you for continuing to. Kick it up a notch in terms of the opportunities that you're looking at for our students. So. I appreciate all the detail that you go into in these presentations. I think you've been here before and, and given us good detail as to how you approach this and what you do. So we'd love to hear from you, but also want to recognize the laid hour of everyone that's here. So, but. Turn it over to you for the exciting next phase of all the hard work you're doing.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, should I share my screen or will you click through it?
We can do both.
Okay, let me just share my screen here. One second. And, okay. Here we go. Thank you so much. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Adley, Mr. Tramburg and members of our community. My name is Christina Vascos Mauricio and I am Chair of World Languages for Grade Six through Twelve for the Darian Public Schools. I'd like to start by commending the students that spoke this evening and thank you for your words and your bravery tonight. Thank you all for welcoming me to your meeting this evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for your support of the World Language Department's Global Education and. and International Travel Program at Darien High School. I'm here this evening to present our trips for the spring of 2023, namely our language immersion trip to the, to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands in April, and the Global Leader Summit to Rome, Florence, and Bologna in the summer. Here's an overview of the agenda for my presentation. As you mentioned, most of the logistical points on here, such as information about our partnership with EF, safety on tour, and accommodations and meals, is the exact same as what I shared last spring when I presented our trips to Spain and Switzerland of the school year. I felt it important to include this so that you can review it again at your leisure. However, to be respectful of your time, I will spend most of our time together highlighting how we developed this phase of our program, share the itineraries, and take your questions. The Global Education and International Travel Program aligns with our district strategic plan and vision of the graduate in providing diverse learning experiences and exposing students to new perspectives. By offering two types of trips, we are able to open these experiences to all DHS students and give them an opportunity to have safe academic travel experiences that allow them to practice their language skills and their leadership skills. With this in mind, we conducted a travel interest survey of all ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade families at the beginning of this school year, and over two hundred families responded. Ninety-seven percent of responded, of respondents said they were very likely or likely to allow their child to travel next school year. By beginning to plan now, we as a department will have more time to plan the logistics of the trip and encourage our students to travel with us. Our families will have more time to consider these opportunities, enroll in the trips, and spread payments over a longer period of time, which will make these experiences accessible to more members of the community. As you know from my previous presentation, perhaps through your own travels with your family, when young people travel, they come back changed and with a greater worldview. Educational travel experiences offer students the opportunity to make what they've been learning in class applicable in the real world. And I will talk more about this and what it means when I go over the itineraries for our excursions. For our trips to the Galapagos and Italy, we have also partnered with Education First, the world leader in educational travel. If you recall, they're the same organization with which we are planning our language immersion trip to Spain and our Global Leader Summit to Switzerland this school year. As you know, the safety of our students is our number one priority while abroad. EF's safety and security protocols are one of the main reasons we have partnered with them again to help us plan our trips. All the safety protocols reviewed in my previous presentation also apply to this trip. I would like to draw your attention once more to EF's peace of mind program and global travel protection. This gives our program the flexibility to change the dates and destination of tours in uncertain times following guidelines from the Department of State and the Centers for Disease Control. This will allow us to still travel even if we have to change the destination or the dates. Now for the fun part, everyone's favorite part. Our language immersion trip is a nine-day trip to Ecuador and Galapagos Islands during the next school year's spring recess in April. Ecuador and Galapagos received the highest number of votes on the survey we conducted in September. Upon our arrival, we will spend two days touring Quito, Ecuador's capital, and visiting the equator. And for the next four days, we will visit the Galapagos Islands and explore the many wonders of the archipelago. And we will spend two days in Quito at the end and also visit Otavalo, a city nestled in the Andean Mountains and known for its artisan community before returning home. Oops, sorry. Before returning home. Here are some of our trip highlights. Not only will our students experience this region in Spanish, but they will also get to refine their inquiry-based science research skills and explore the diversity of this region while being led by an expert guide. We will explore the colonial and modern parts of Quito and literally be in two places at once when visiting the equator. When we make our way to the Galapagos Islands themselves, we will visit the Charles Darwin Research Station and learn about how the scientists there are saving the world-famous Galapagos tortoise from extinction. The region is known for its lush and colorful flora and fauna, and our students will have the opportunity to see the region's diverse species up close. We will also visit the Otavalo Market and see the rich artistry of the region up close and learn the craft of local indigenous artists. The second excursion I'm presenting this evening is EF Summer Global Leadership Summit in July. The Global Leader Summit is more than just a summit. It is a week-long trek through Italy where students will be spending a lot of time outdoors exploring and learning about sustainable environmental practices, farm-to-table, and how local ingredients are used in some of the most loved dishes in the world. Then students convene at the Leadership Summit itself. And in the survey we conducted in September, there were two tours to Italy, and this one received the highest number of votes. In 2023, the summit's focus is sustainability, but you will notice the strong interdisciplinary ties to history, science, and the study of Latin. DHS students will have the opportunity to travel through northern Italy, exploring food sustainability practices before eventually arriving in Berlin, where they will present their findings. After an overnight flight to Rome, we will spend four days in the Eternal City and in the Vatican, and then move on to Florence, Bologna, and Milan before eventually arriving in Berlin to attend the Leader Summit. And at the summit, students will meet up with other students their age that have been traveling through other parts of the world on their own research trips and present their findings. There will be many keynote speakers who are world leaders in the sustainability space that students will have the opportunity to meet and network with as well. Some of the highlights we will see on our trip through northern Italy, aside from eating delicious food, we will take an in-depth guided tour of Rome's monuments and a walking tour of the Vatican City, which will include a privately guided tour of the Sistine Chapel. While in Florence, in addition to visiting the city highlights, we will take a traditional Tuscan cooking class and tour the Florentine markets. We will then move on to the beautiful city of Bologna and visit the university, the oldest institution of higher learning in the world, and tour the rest of the Emilia-Romagna region to learn about their sustainable agriculture practices, and of course, visit the FICO Italy World, which, if you've ever been to the Italy near the Flatiron in Manhattan, this one is about ten times bigger, better, and has an expositional focus that highlights how, how Italy is preserving its culinary history while also leading the way in combating world hunger through sustainability. Accommodations and meals. The accommodations and meal arrangements that I presented at our previous meeting are the same for our time in Ecuador and Italy. All of our hotel accommodations are centrally located in the cities we will be visiting and in safe areas. They all meet EF's very high standards for safety, quality, and cleanliness. And each hotel is at least three stars, and each room has an en suite bathroom and free Wi-Fi for guests. Because EF has local in-person staff in each destination country, they're able to inspect hotel properties regularly to ensure that they continue to meet these safety standards season after season. Our meals on tour are designed to give our students an authentic and immersive culinary experience. Basically, we eat how locals eat, and in Italy, I don't mind that. The price of the trip also includes all breakfast and dinners. And while we do encourage students to partake in local cuisine, we will, of course, accommodate any dietary restrictions or individual dietary needs. And as mentioned in my previous presentations and in the field trip request forms.
Christina, I don't, I don't want to interrupt a great presentation. I think we have seen a lot of this.
This is the last slide.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, this is the last one.
Our board members have done their homework and reading through the package. So is there anything you wanted to highlight here, and then we'll, we'll move to some questions.
Questions.
Thank you for a great presentation, as always.
Yeah, thank you. The, not really. I mean, I think I highlighted this in the last two presentations I did, but for us, the most important thing is obviously safety. And we have an EF tour director that is actually with us twenty-four seven. This is a person that meets us in the airport at the location when we finally get there, and they stay with us throughout the remainder of the trip. They travel with us, they're taking the same modes of transportation as we are, and this is one of the greatest benefits of, of traveling with them, is this dedicated person that is with us the entire time. And the nature of these trips, especially to the Galapagos Islands, and because the summer Leadership Summit has the summit in itself in Berlin, that educational programming, which involves, you know, visiting the science centers, taking those excursions, taking classes, those are all included as well.
Great. Thank you so much. Really great job on organizing this and, and presenting it. And thanks for all the hard work you're doing behind the scenes. You've taken this to the next level. Thank you so much. To board members that want to be chaperones and then question. Mrs. Ritchie.
I will definitely be a chaperone. I just wanted to thank you, Christina. I thank you for expanding our children's classroom beyond the borders of Darien. It's very important for our learners to realize that there was, that there was a world beyond our borders, and bringing them to these interesting and different communities and worlds is very important to that. So I thank you, and thank you for all the work that you put into the presentation.
Thank you.
This is Richie. Any other board comments or questions? Terrific. Well, thank you so much. Again, just appreciate the detail and all that you're doing for this program.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Thank you all.
I mean, the state said, obviously, these are phenomenal programs, and just, just absolutely in line with the district mission and vision and all the discussion we had tonight, actually.
Mrs. McCammon. Do they want to vote? To go on the trip?
Yeah, it's not in action.
Presentation and discussion.
That's okay. It doesn't mean, it can go through the normal process. It can come back again. That's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't see any need to vote. All right, good. Thank you again. Thanks, Mrs. McCammon. We'll move along to discussion and possible action on the 2022-2023 federal consolidated grants. Mr. Tranberg and Mr. Roodel.
Good evening again, everyone. There is a brief memo in the packet that provides an overview of the consolidated federal grant allocations for titles one, two, three, and four. These funds are based on the census poverty data estimates each year. Titles one, two, three, and four are being used similarly as they have been in the past. The only piece of note that is a bit different is in Title Four. There's some funds earmarked to support the implementation of any support we might need with the Gifted Education Program Review and potential consulting services to support moving that work forward. But other than that, you're seeing similar, similar items that have been in the grant. Like there's a staffing interventionist that is tied to Title One. Title Two is professional development. Also, some of our TC partnership is in there, and Title Three is related to supporting our English learners.
Thank you, Mr. Tranberg. Questions or comments from the board? All right. We have a motion to approve the allocation of the expenditures in Title One, Two, Three, and Four. Mrs. Ackman, second by Mrs. Stein, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. We'll move on to presentation and preliminary discussion of regular Board of Education meetings for the 2022 calendar year. Dr. Adley.
Yep, so the, the calendar is as before you, the January date through the June date on the left-hand side. We have previously approved those, so you're, you're really looking to approve on the right-hand side, July twenty-sixth through December.
Any questions or comments on the preliminary discussion on the board calendar? All right, Mrs. Parent.
Just my only comment is if election day is the eighth, and then the, the, that would be the organizational meeting would be on the ninth. Is that close? Is that, I don't know. The organizational day doesn't have to be on the ninth if you're.
It doesn't have to be today.
If the board wasn't writing, but it typically is, but it doesn't have to.
Right, okay.
No, but good point. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. All right. Any further commentary on that? We'll move along. Preliminary discussion of the 2022-2023 budget meeting calendar. Dr. Adley.
So again, it's been revised accordingly, and I'm happy to listen to board input. Does there's any suggestions or otherwise?
I think this is an initial look at it. We've got to work with our partners on other boards and committees. I know we've had some discussion over the course of the year, making sure these dates work, making sure there's the right amount of time in between our discussions and discussions that other boards and committees have to make, and making sure there's time to get questions answered. So we can take any questions or thoughts this evening, but I would like to, the board, to spend some time on making sure everyone feels good about this budget calendar and any other feedback or comment that we need to get from our partners on Board of Finance and the RTM subcommittees also. Mrs. Ackman.
So the only thing I would say is historically, our Board of Edu, our regular Board of Education meeting seems to fall on the same Tuesday as the Board of Finance's discussion. And so we always end up changing our schedule last minute or asking them to do it. Maybe this year, if we can just make sure that we're on opposite Tuesdays for everyone's ease, that would be better doing it in advance.
Good point. Thank you. Okay, good. Um, we will move along. Yes, sorry, Mr. Seeny.
I'm sorry, the twenty-seventh, or I'm sorry, the February first, Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, we have a public hearing. That's our. And then it says final budget review is needed, so it's not just going to be a public hearing, close the meeting. We're going to have an ability to react to the.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good point. Thank you.
So to clarify, we typically have a hearing, then we have a meeting on our budget.
Yes.
So, I mean, I guess there could be something that in that meeting you could react, but you'd have to warn your agenda that way.
Yes, okay, good point. Yep, good. I understood. Okay, thank you both. Yes, Mrs. McCammon.
On the question of the hearing, I, I know this is the schedule we traditionally use, but again, this year, the, the hearing was the same night as our final cut list. And so do we want to take a look at moving the hearing any earlier so that we have time to respond to adds or cuts from the parent community with a little more flexibility?
Yes, and I think any other comments like that, I would appreciate if y'all send them in to me, and then we'll accumulate them for discussion at the next board meeting. Good, thank you, Mrs. McCammon. We will move along to further discussion and possible action on proposed revised Board of Education policies. I will not read through all of them now, but when we do the motion, I will. I will open it up for any questions or comments. I know this is Scion and Mrs. Stein have worked hard on this, and I think we're at a good place, but board questions or comments?
Yeah, barring any other questions, I don't think Marge or I have received any since the last meeting, so I would say we're ready to vote.
Okay.
Anyone has any questions?
Yes, Mr. Seeny.
I raised, I raised the policy that said we had to meet in person, but I guess is that what you're meeting with on Friday at ninety-five?
So, Marge, do you want to explain? Because I brought that up to Marge, and this policy is revised first. We're then going to revise that. That's in our next batch.
Perfect, thank you.
John raised a policy that needs to now be updated, which is on our next batch, so.
Okay, good. Everyone on the board clear on that? Okay, good. I will move forward. We have a motion to approve revised Board of Education policies. Policy ten seventy-five, green cleaning protocols. Policy twelve hundred, use of school facilities. Policy twelve twenty-five, visitors. Policy twelve fifty, school volunteers, student interns, and other non-employees. Policy fifty-one seventy-five, bullying prevention and intervention. Policy fifty-two twenty, student discipline. Proposed new board policy ninety-two eighty, student representation on the Board of Education. Policy ninety-three ten, meeting conduct. And policy C dash nineteen dash one, health and safety. I have a motion to move those forward. Mrs. Ritchie, second by Mrs. Stein. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving along, discussion and possible action on a request for the Board of Selectmen to appoint, is that right, the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Possible action on a request for the Board of Selectmen to appoint the Board of Education, okay, to serve as building committee for the Royal School Roof Replacement. Right, okay. Appoint, serve the Board of Education, all right. Well, I'm just reading through this first. Appoint the Board of Education to serve as building committee for the Royal School Roof Replacement Project. Authorize the Board of Education to apply to the Commission of Education to accept or reject such a grant for the Royal School Roof Replacement, and authorize at least the preparation of the schematic drawings and outline specifications for the proposed Royal School Roof Replacement Project. So any questions or comments around that? Okay, so we have a motion, request, a motion to request the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Darien to authorize the Darien Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Education. to apply to the Commission of Education to accept or reject such a grant for the Royal School Roof Replacement Project. Mr. Brown, second by Mrs. Ritchie, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. You did this a little backwards, I apologize. May have a motion to request the Board of Selectmen of the town of Darien to appoint the Board of Education to serve as the Building Committee for Royal School Roof Replacement. Mr. Brown, second by Mrs. Ackman, all those in favor? That is unanimous. And may have a motion to authorize for at least preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the proposed Royal School Roof Replacement Project. Mrs. Stein, second by Mrs. Parent, all in favor? Good, thank you very much. Dr. Adley, adjustment to the 2021-2022 calendar for the Henley School makeup days.
Mr. Lynch, thank you, by the way, for being there. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lynch. Thanks for staying up with us.
No problem. See you all later.
All right.
So this is a proposal to make up the two Henley days. And the proposal is we have two professional development days on January 14 and February 18. Our inclination would be to split those days into two half-days. Half-days for students and half professional development days for our staff. There is no requirement of how long a school day needs to be. You need to make sure that you have 900 hours in and 180 days. So the length of day we will work out, just basically be two half-days for the most part. And that's a proposal that honestly, we're just looking at those two half-days for children during the year are going to be much more productive than two half-days at the end of the year in June. Just relatively as simple as that.
All right, questions, comments? All right. May have a motion? Nope, no motion. All right, moving along, review of FOIOLog. Mrs. Scion, we agreed some time ago on a regular basis to review the FOIOLog. So I will turn it over to you, Ms. Scion.
I have one correction to this. I got a request for 592019 from Mr. Palin that the request was that it should signify that he was part of the Board of Finance officially as he was requesting that. I wasn't here during that time, but a review of the correspondences back then suggested that that should have been made. So I'm happy to make that adjustment accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Let Ms. Scion present this and then we'll go to questions if that's all right? Good, thank you, Mrs. Parent.
I mean, I don't have really much to say, except that from the time that we started this, what you can see over the past year or so is more what you would expect in the ordinary course of business.
Okay, yes.
And also, at some point, maybe at the end of the discussion, I'd like to get the feel from the board, because it talks about an annual review of this. And moving forward, would you like an annual review of where we sort of left off this time? As opposed to the, you know, going the whole way back. The practice, I wasn't sure of what we've been doing, to be honest with you. And we haven't done an annual review since I've been here, given COVID and whatnot.
If you review it annually, then the next year it should be from that point.
I've seen what people would.
Sorry about that.
All right, Mrs. Parent, thank you.
I was just going to clarify, and this happens to me all the time, that I am not the parent that says parent. I had a couple of people saying that you requested a lot. And so just to clarify, I did not request any for it.
Good point. Thanks for clarifying that.
A parent, not Sarah parent.
Good point. All right, thank you. Further discussion on the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee, Mr. Tranberg. I think Dr. Adley and I touched base real quickly. I think what we need to do is clarify what the board decided on during our conversation around curriculum. Some of the things I heard this evening in public comment, I want to make sure people fully understand that after a lot of discussion, a lot of good feedback and comments from the public, the board decided and voted on forming a curriculum committee, which is a subcommittee of the Board of Ed. And on that committee are Board of Ed members. So that is what was decided on, and that's what we're moving forward with at this point in time. Again, we will continue to lessen. We will continue to work with everyone to see how that goes. We'll get that organized in short order. Mr. Tranberg has some updates for us here. We're talking, you know, amongst the board as to what that looks like and who's on it. So we'll move forward. But again, if there's something else we need or something else we need to look at in terms of at the district level, there was a conversation around that. We'll look at it and we'll have that conversation. But just to be clear, a curriculum committee was agreed and voted on to be established, which is a subcommittee of the Board of Ed. That will be, people from the Board of Ed will be on that committee. All right. Dr. Adley, if you want to add to that?
No, I just, we just delineated a little bit of what typically that might entail, and I won't go over it. You certainly can read the main points of discussion. We outlined what a typical outline might look like. That doesn't preclude board members and the subcommittee asking for different presentations or otherwise. And then we just took liberty just to propose a schedule. We say we start in December. I proposed it January before, but we could do it starting in December. We'd have to check the dates and we'll revisit it after the election. And, but we just sort of like tried to outline a process.
I will open up to board questions, comment. Mrs. Stein.
So Chris, in looking at this with the subcommittee meetings, are you envisioning every subsequent Board of Ed meeting that be brought and updated? Are you going to consolidate and bring them less frequently? Like, how do you envision the subcommittee rolling up into the board presentations?
I would anticipate they'd be consolidated. In the proposed master calendar for this year, there aren't as many curriculum updates as there are curriculum subcommittee meetings. So it is, it looks more like one curriculum update for every one Board of Ed presentation for every two subcommittee meetings about there, thereabout.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Any other questions or comments around this? Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
Thank you, Chris. I really appreciate this work. And I just wanted to mention that I support our teachers. I support their autonomy and I support giving them everything that they need and making sure that we don't micromanage. So I'm fine that this committee is in place, but I want it to be a high-level discussion. I don't want to micromanage our teachers. I don't want to ask them to give us their lesson plans. So I just wanted to make that clear. At this point, I'd like to see how diversity, equity, inclusion is being tied into our curriculum. And I don't know if that's happening at this curriculum committee level. I think it should. I denounce all acts of hatred and words of hatred. And I think we have a lot of work to do in this community. And I think it doesn't have any place in our community. It doesn't have any place in our schools, and it doesn't have any place in our world. So this is important work. I hope this curriculum committee has diversity, equity, and inclusion as part of it. And we need to start that work now. I'm disappointed that we haven't done anything yet. I don't know why we haven't done anything yet, but I heard those students tonight. I'm with you. I support you, and I will support you now and when I'm off the board. And I think as a community, we have to do better.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Any other thoughts or comments? I think this is a great first draft. I think we all agree this is a living, breathing document that will continue to adjust and build upon. And once we get things up and running in a couple of weeks, it'll be important to continue to get feedback from the community also. Mrs. Parent.
I was just going to say to one of the comments that we heard tonight, just that whoever is on the subcommittee, and I'm sure Mr. Tranberg and Dr. Adley will ensure that special education is built into each one of these topics.
Thank you for that point, Mrs. Parent. Anything else? Board questions or comments? Good, all right. Thank you very much. We'll move along to further discussion and possible action on Board Master Agenda for August 2021 through February 2022.
So the adjustments here have been, I think we've included now the adjustments that the board wanted to see, which is the enrollment report, the FOIOLog, and the other items that were mentioned at the last board meeting.
Yes, Mrs. Ackman.
Given all we heard tonight and last board meetings kind of question and back and forth on immediate midterm and long-term responses to diversity, equity, inclusion, and what we've heard from our students tonight, where on the master agenda will we hear updates on what actions are being taken in schools?
Unless, unless it's specifically said here, it would only come through my announcements. That's the only place it would be. Unless it came to come through curriculum discussions or so on, but that might be more isolated in many ways. So unless there's a separate agenda item here, it would only come through the superintendent's announcements.
So given what we heard tonight, I would suggest that the board consider making some regular updates and benchmarks of where we are, what we've done so far. I mean, we've done that. I see one on September, I mean, we had one September 14. But I think what we've heard is, why aren't you acting? So as a board, I believe the members up here would like to act. And so we'd like to know what the administration is doing, I would suggest, on a more regular basis.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Mrs. McCammon.
Could that be incorporated? Is that already incorporated in the strategic plan? And if not, could it be incorporated, since it is a discrete set of work?
Oh, it would be definitely part of the strategic plan update, yes.
My thought would maybe be more explicit, given what we heard this evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
I agree. I think it needs to be more prominent on the master agenda. It needs to be highlighted and discussed more, and I don't want it stuck in the strategic plan discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. I agree with all those comments. I think based on what we heard and the conversation that's going on in the community, I think we need to define it a little more throughout the course of the year. I will tell you, Dr. Adley and I have had conversations about organizations that he's working with, that I reached out to, different things like that. And what I asked Dr. Adley to do in short order is also come to the board and make a presentation in terms of outlining what organizations we're talking to and what those organizations would bring to the table and how that would look. I honestly think we need some help outside of our district and our community. And those are some of the things that the administration is looking at and researching right now. We've also had those conversations with the First Selectmen and other leaders in town, too. So we'll get organized around that. And I think that's a good kicking off point as to what we're looking at and how we're doing it. And then that should build into kind of a calendar of events and how we're going to roll this out. Mrs. Stein.
Can I just add to that? Can you, in your sort of global look at this, can you make sure you incorporate the extracurricular workshops at the high school in particular for athletes? I would like to express my dismay at the fact that fall athletes, juniors, and seniors are not even having the training till end of October, which is two-thirds of the way through their season. We heard from students tonight. We've heard from parents. Athletics is part of this discussion, too. You have a captive audience there of parents and students. And I think it needs to be more robust and it needs to be reviewed because it, you know, and for the winter athletes, we're given a date at the end of January. I just don't think that's acceptable. If it really is supposed to be part of your training preseason, it's not happening that way, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. So would the board like to see kind of an update at the next meeting where we incorporate at least some tentative dates of where we're going to have more deeper dive on this discussion and not take action this evening on this calendar?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. We will move forward to action items, personnel items, Ms. Scion.
So we continue to have some resignations and new hires of non-certified staff. We did unfortunately have a resignation of a certified staff member that happened too late to include in this report. We'll put it next time, and there's a rumor of another person because I think as we've been hearing, education is not an easy business these days.
Thank you, Ms. Scion. May have a motion to approve the personal item report as detailed in the report dated October 12, 2021. Mr. Seeny, second by Mrs. Stein, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Michelle, we will go back to your steady hand on public comment. Is there anyone in person that would like to make public comment before we move to our friends on Zoom? Yes, sure, please. Thank you.
Julie Ponisillo, 23 Fitz Avenue, I'm the mother of one of the speakers today. Trying not to get emotional, but I really hope you did hear them today. I hope that you know that we, as parents, will be holding you accountable for action and change. Now is the time for the culture to change. It's unattainable, but it's been happening as long as it has. And I just really hope that you did hear them. I can hear from what you're saying. Thank you for making sure that's being present on the master agenda. It's going to be addressed going forward. So thank you for hearing them and just want to get to know them.
Julie, thank you very much. Michelle, we will move over to Zoom.
If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. The facilitator will identify you. Please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment.
Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to make public comment?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Thank you, everyone in person. Thank you to the students and some of the alumni. Thank you to everyone on Zoom. Again, we're listening. We heard a lot this evening. Thanks for the dialogue. Thanks for the conversation from a public perspective and also from the board table, too. Appreciate it. Thank you and have a good evening. Motion to adjourn. Mrs. Stein, second by Mr. Seeny, all those in favor? That's unanimous.